Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I must say that it's really nice to hear that many people join together in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. That was a nice sound. Can you hear me now? Okay. I was just saying that it was really nice to see that many voices joined in the Pledge of Allegiance. That's a good sound. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I'd like to make a change in the order of business tonight. Under new business, item number seven C, I'd like to move the Cortez Youth Committee appointment up to the first item after item number four, citizen participation, so that our young student who we're going to vote on for appointing to the Youth Commission can be here for that. I'm afraid if we wait until after we cover other business first, that with this being a school night, she may not be able to stay. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, which is a group of items to be acted upon with a single motion and vote. It's designed to expedite the handling of a limited routine matters by council. I will ask if a citizen or a council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include the approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes for January the 14th, 2020, approval of expenditure vouchers on January the 28th, 2020, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for Rudowski Unlimited, approval of a special event permit for Habitat for Humanity to host a fundraiser on Saturday, April the 25th, at the Montezuma County Senior Center. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda that anybody would like to see table for discussion?
I don't have any.
In that case, may I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the change from seven to C, moved after number four for the Youth Coalition, and with the extra expenditures of what $16,950.04.
No second?
Keel?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Newsero?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Bets?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye.
We have no presentations tonight at this time. If there is a citizen that would like to make comment about something other than the land use code, now is your chance. If you'll step up to the podium. Okay. Oh, this has nothing to do with the land use code? Okay. If you would, please state your name and address, and be sure that mic is on, that the green light is shining.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Alan Mays, Road 21, Lewis. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to the council. I attended the council meeting of January 14th, 2020, and a military veteran spoke about his concerns over some Facebook postings. Also, a Cortez Planning Department member spoke about those same Facebook postings. I do not think that the council did their duty regarding either commenter. Saying you too are appalled by those postings did nothing for the veterans' concerns. No one on the council seemed to care that someone from a Cortez committee position used disrespectful language at your public meeting hearing and in the presence of members of the Youth Committee. Is that an example of what public servants such as yourselves promote? I bring this up because your actions have caused community awakening. Council members are elected to represent the community. You are seeing the results by the outpouring of the public at council meetings and other recent public meetings. Five seats are up for election on the council in April. You will most likely see the biggest voter turnout for this election. Citizens are looking for council members with integrity, humility, civility, transparency, people that have equitable judgment and common sense. I think you need, as a council, to give a public apology to all of the veterans of the community for those postings. I also think you need to dismiss public servants that disrespect the community. You cannot live in a bubble. You, representing the community, took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Colorado. Starting each meeting with a pledge of allegiance is a reminder of that oath, and is not just something on the agenda that you have to get through. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lana Rogers, Row 21.4, Cortez. I would like to share my experience on January 14th. After a long day of interacting with a kind, courteous, and gracious public in a city with a population of 1.5 million, I went back to my hotel room and watched the City of Cortez council meeting. I watched in disbelief as the meeting played out. A military veteran spoke about an inappropriate comment on Facebook that had been made by Mr. McDaniel, who is a City of Cortez P&amp;Z Commissioner. The comment concerning veterans was excused away by the mayor, another council person, and Mrs. Levy, who is also the P&amp;Z council chairman. The comment that was made was entirely inexcusable. While Mr. McDaniel has afforded his own opinion, he is still a representative of the City of Cortez. The City of Cortez, who recently made a green light ordinance in honor of our veterans, and the Board of Realtors, hosted an annual light parade with the theme of saluting hometown heroes and honoring our veterans. Least I remind you that this small community, within the last year, has lost two men, fighting for not only our freedoms and liberties, but the freedoms and liberties for others, so that they might also have a voice in their own part of the world. The Commissioner could have recognized that while he thought that his comment was humorous, many others found it inappropriate, and he could have chosen to issue a public apology, and this has not been done either. I was appalled that anyone would make excuses for this. Ms. Levy, who was the City of Cortez P&amp;Z chairman, marched her way to the podium, not only making excuses, but while doing so, chose to use vulgar language while the Youth Commission was in attendance. This profanity was not only disrespectful, unprofessional, but language that she chose to use when she was supposed to be a role model for our youth. And I also found it to be shameful that our mayor would then thank her for her comments. Mayor, you then admonished a citizen for calling that Commissioner who posted the remark an embarrassment to the community, when yet minutes before, you thanked the chairman for her comments and omitted any admonishment for her profanity. I then heard you, Mayor, unmanly utter "Oh, God" as Elizabeth walks to the podium to speak concerning the land use code, which will greatly affect her and her livelihood. And should I remind you that when she spoke previously, she spoke very courteously and graciously to you. And last but not least, Mayor, when asking for the last public participation, you again, unmanly said, "Please say no." With all of this being said in your editorial to the Journal, you say that we are a community that prides itself on consideration for one another? Really? Because this is not what I witnessed from the aforementioned City of Cortez representatives that January 14th night. I am ashamed that this town, with a population of 9,000, is being represented this way. The City of Cortez deserves better. This needs to change, and it is my prayer that at this upcoming election, it will do so. I would like to remind all of council that you, and you alone, appoint P&amp;Z commissioners, and you can unappoint them as well, and I ask that you do just that. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a lot of business to take care of this evening. I imagine there will be a significant amount of public comment, and unless you want to be here until midnight or 1:00 this morning, it's real important that we kind of move forward. I want everybody to have an opportunity to be able to speak, but let's do it in a way that allows us to move forward quickly. Yes?
Hi. Mindy Nelson wrote in. There's nothing that hasn't already been said that I want to stand here and say that I had wrote down, but as being part as we, the people, I also ask you and tell you to please unappoint the loud mouths of Lance McDaniel and Rebecca Levy as their leadership position, as being very immature in front of our youth group. You appointed him, you can unappoint him. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Don Kirk, and I live at 9 West Second Street. One of the most important people in my life was my father. Some of you know that already. My father taught me to listen to other people. He taught me to let people know when I disapprove of what they're doing and to take action when necessary. He also taught me to recognize when people are actually doing their job, and when they're doing their job for us. As a citizen of this community, I've been here for 14, 15 years. I have met many people that I can say wonderful things about. I've also met many people that I would say the opposite. But my intention right now is to say that those people who are on this committee, who care about us, and who are doing things for us and not against us, those people who are listening to what all of us have to say, and those people who are voting in our interest, you are representing us, and those people that I'm talking about, I wish to give credit to. Thank you.
Larry Don Suklo, 11721, wrote 27.1 Dolores. Montezuma County Commissioner. I'm here to talk about the airport. I'm here to talk about several things, but the airport, we had a meeting, the city council had a meeting about the airport. The airport manager came. That's usually what happens when I start talking.
I'm wondering if somebody's leaning up against the light switch there by the door, maybe?
Well, you can still hear me, and I'm losing time. So we need to work together. The county needs to work together with the current city council and the new city council. We had our airport manager come. The people need to know that on airport improvements, that the federal government gives you 95% of the money, and then the county or the city would have to come up with 5%. That means if you want to do a $1 million improvement to the airport, it would cost you $50,000. If you want to do $10 million worth of improvements to our airport, it would cost you $500,000. The airport manager said two things. I always verify when somebody tells me something. He said that it depends on population, if you get that money from the federal government, and it depends on if you have an airline or some business wants to come in. I have verified that both of those statements were false, and I'm going to give you an example. Alamosa County has 16,000 people. We have 26,000 people in Montezuma County. In the last 10 years, because the county actually controls the airport, the city controls it, but we could work together on this, they have spent $22 million on their airport. They had a meeting in St. George, Utah, and they would like, a little company, SkyWest, that employs 20,000 people, would like to fly 70-passenger jets into Alamosa. So you need to verify when you have an employee tell you something to make sure that that's true or not. Let's work together. You guys are on your way out, some of you, and let's start with what they call an airport advisory committee or something like that, where we can get people that are knowledgeable. I don't know anything about airports. I don't know if very many of you do. Let's get people on board, because it's an economic driver. We could have freight come into this county and this town. It would create all kinds of economic benefits. We're not going to get a railroad. We're not going to get a freeway anytime soon. Second of all, I'd like to tell you that when you gave Seventh Street to us, you had your engineers do a survey, an estimate of what it would cost to take Seventh Street through to 27th Street. Your estimate from your engineers was $500,000. I'm pleased to announce that the county roughed in that for $90,000. My point is this. There's a reason that Montezuma County does not have engineers. Engineers are used for very specific things. You have bridge engineers. You have road engineers. We spend $140,000 to $160,000 a year on engineering. If you hire an engineer to do all of your engineering, they're going to over-engineer. It's going to cost you twice as much money because they're not familiar with certain aspects of engineering, and I'm hoping that I could work with, that the commissioners can work with this current council, and anybody that's running for city council, and I believe we can work to turn things around. Thank you.
My name is Debbie Boyd, and I've lived in Montezuma County for 38 years, and I love it. I am concerned about the loss of liberty in our county, our state, and our country. But we are blessed to live in the United States of America, where we have a constitution that can hold our government accountable and is founded on the principles of liberty. According to our Declaration of Independence, government's role is to protect the rights of the people, and it's the people's role to hold government accountable. John Adams said, "Property must be secured, or liberty cannot exist." Men and women have died so we can own and control our property. It is our responsibility to hold our government accountable to protecting our rights. I don't need government to tell me what to do or how to do it. If we have a problem, what do we do, Faith?
Call Grandpa!
That's right. And I've never came across a problem that Grandpa can't fix. I am asking you to stand up for our rights, even if it means you lose some of that free money, so that our children, our grandchildren, can be free. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Richard Cox. I live at 701 Hartman Road here in Cortez, and I'm a Vietnam veteran. I don't believe anyone who curses our vets should hold any public office. I believe it is an honor to have everyone who lives here to have the park named after the veterans. If it wasn't for our vets, we'd be speaking German or Japanese. Thank you.
Stephen Fote, 11636, Row 28.3. A lot of people have said, "I'm not a business planning," so I just want to remind you that the last line that we all said tonight was "liberty and justice for all." I came here from California because at the time, Colorado had the fewest number of laws limiting personal freedoms out of any state in the country. I see that changing rapidly, and it's very discouraging. I left a place that told you how to do just about everything, whether or not it was right or wrong, but it was politically correct. And I came here thinking I was going to have a little bit of freedom, but I see that going away, and it's very, very, very upsetting. And what people do with their land is up to them, and I guess that's it. Thanks.
Okay.
I'd like to bring something up. Maybe on our work session, we can bring up the topic, but our people there in P&amp;Z, probably for a discussion to see what direction, if we can put that on the agenda.
We can't hear you.
I was just suggesting that for the P&amp;Z people that have been brought up and everything, put it on our next week's, I mean, our next meeting's agenda for our work session, and see what, which direction we should go.
And I think that's a good idea, too. Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to, if there's nobody else, we're going to move on to the appointment to the Cortez Youth Commission.
So I'm Rosa Diamond. I'm the Recreation Supervisor for the City of Cortez. As many of you guys know, council, Peyton is leaving us. Today was her last day. So we would actually like to say thank you to Peyton for all of the work. She's the one that kind of founded the Youth Commission and has worked really hard to make it what it is now. So thank you, Peyton. We are also here tonight to request the appointment of Jada Mitchell. She is a freshman, and I'll let her talk here in a second. She's a freshman at the high school, and she has been through an interview process, and the, I don't know, chair and co-chair of the Youth Commission are recommending her as well. So would you like to say something? You don't have to. It's okay. You don't have to.
Hello. I'm Jada. Thank you for this opportunity and your time.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Does this, do any council members have any questions?
No. Thank you for wanting to serve.
Absolutely. In that case, may I have a motion, please? Madam Mayor, I'd like to make motion to reapprove the appointment of Jada Mitchell to the Cortez Youth Commission.
Second it. Lady?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Newsero?
Aye.
Bets?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye.
All right. We have no unfinished business, and so we're going to move on to new business. Oops. Scratch that. I've jumped too far ahead. We're going to move into public hearings. Before we get started, I have a few comments that I would like to make. First of all, I would like to welcome all of you and thank you for coming out tonight. I know probably many of you would have preferred to have stayed home where it was warmer. Your presence here this evening is a true demonstration of civics in action. Council and staff, welcome your input, and we trust that it is everybody's goal tonight to respectfully make decisions and present information that will be in the best interest of our communities as we move forward. We have set up overflow locations. I know a lot of you are standing up against the wall. There is seating in the training room that is just right across the hall from council chambers, and there's also seating in the misaverting room, just right next door. There are screens set up. There's a slight delay, but it's not a long enough video delay that it should make any difference. You will have to come to the podium to make any comments, because we don't have the ability to set up satellite mics that will allow everybody to hear your comments in this chambers, nor can we set them up so that they can be recorded for live streaming purposes. When you come to the mic, the green light should be on. I think all of you received copies of the July 2018 Resolution governing public comment. It was distributed to people as they came in. I'd like to review those guidelines right now, just to be sure that we are all on the same page. If you wish to make a public comment, you do have to come to the podium to do that. Please be sure that you speak into the mic. I've had several people contact me that have just reminded me to remind you that if you'll speak clearly into the mic, then everybody can hear, and those people watching at home will be able to hear as well. All comments are to be directed to the mayor and to the council, not to the room. You're here making comments to this body, not to the audience. As per Resolution 13 Series 2018, comments will be limited to four minutes per person. The purpose of this resolution is to provide individual citizens with an opportunity for input, not to give a few people a platform to monopolize the discussion. Council wishes to hear from the many, not the few. So consequently, there will be no relinquishing of time to somebody else this evening. You have four minutes. Everybody will have the opportunity to speak, four minutes. Cheryl, would you stand up? Cheryl is a city staff member. She's going to be our timekeeper. There is a time clock right up there. When you have 30 seconds left, she's going to hold up this yellow sheet, and when you have 15 seconds left, she will hold up the red. When you see the 30 seconds, you need to start winding down, because as soon as the clock hits zero, she's going to call time, and even if you're in mid-sentence, you need to stop. That's in order to give everybody time to be able to speak. We've got lots of folks, and if you all want the opportunity to make a comment, that means a lot of minutes, so we need to keep on time with that. Once each person has had the opportunity to speak, citizens wishing to speak a second time may do so. However, I would encourage the audience to be respectful of everyone's time and only return to the podium if you have something additional to add to the conversation. If you're simply going to be repeating what several other people have already stated, that's been recorded. It's not going to carry more weight because it's said 15 times, as opposed to having it said once. Finally, I would like to remind all in this room that public comment needs to be focused on the land use code. Accusations or demeaning remarks made towards staff are inappropriate, and they are unacceptable. The purpose of tonight's public comment is to get concerns on record. Staff involved with the code have worked hard. They did what they were asked to do, and they have nothing personal to gain, so please restrict your comments to the parts of the code that are of concern to you or that you believe are improvements in the old code. Demeaning staff members or members of council is counterproductive to tonight's discussion. I would remind you that each city employee and the council member seated before you have come here to do the best job possible for the citizens of this community. Sometimes we disagree. Sometimes we hit a home run, and sometimes we need to go back to the drawing board, but we always work with the intent of doing good. And I hope that each of you, upon reflection, can agree that that's true. I don't think that there's a single person sitting on council or a single person that works for the City of Cortez that comes to their job with the intention of doing harm to anybody in this community. So it's my hope that it's everyone's intent tonight to provide input so that we can produce a land use code that will be good not only for today, but for the a land use code that will be good not only for today, but for the future. So I thank you.
I'd like to make one comment. As far as everybody saying the same thing, it does make a difference to me. You could all sit up. I can't speak for everybody else up here, but it does make a difference. You could all get up and say the same thing, but that means that you all feel the same way. So.
All right. All right, at this time, we will open it up to public comment. If you wish to make a comment, come to the podium. State your name and the address of your residence, please.
I'm going to start this a little different than I had planned. First of all, I would like to, it's on, sorry, I'll speak better. I would like to thank Mayor Sheik and the City Council for tabling this for us and giving us time to get the public awareness out there. It wasn't that hard. It could have been done. And with that said, I'm here to speak about the land use code tonight, but instead of going over all of the problems with the code itself, most of which you have already heard from me, I would like to go over the flawed process that got us to this point. It was started on July 25, 2014, when the Planning and Zoning Department applied for a grant through DOLA before it was even approved by City Council. It took a month for them to take it to City Council for approval on August 26, 2014, when they should have done that before they applied for the grant. After that, they got approved for the DOLA grant and the grant from Gates Family Foundation. The city added $50,000 of matching funds. In March of 2015, the city put out a request for proposals for the rewrite of the land use code and for a three-mile plan. The proposals were evaluated by staff, including Tracy Hughes. Staff apparently never Googled Kendick Keast, the people that are responsible for writing this, to see what messes and uprising they created across the United States doing the exact same thing that was done here. And it was decided to award the contract to Kendick Keast, at which time Tracy Hughes signed a contract with them for approximately $180,000. In this contract, it was spelled out exactly what duties Kendick Keast was to perform for the city. Tracy Hughes was designated by the city as a responsible city staff member to provide direction to the contractor during the project, some of which included something called My Sidewalk Virtual Town Hall, which was supposed to provide a conduit for continuous community, continuous community participation. This never happened. Sorry, I must skip a page. We're also supposed to organize the site into topic areas that address the common themes and respond to unique planning considerations for Cortez. This never happened. Back to the grant. Part of the grant application stated that the City of Cortez would have a massive public outreach and Kendick Keast was supposed to be performing a big part of that. It was in the contract. This never happened. I have performed many projects for the city and always had a contract that spelled out the duties I was to perform, just like theirs did. I was always paid after I completed the duties in the contract. All the quantities and duties listed for me to perform were always closely monitored to ensure I completed the duties required. Once I was finished with the contract, I was always checked to make sure I met all the requirements of the contract and was up to standards. This never happened with Kendick Keast. Kendick Keast was paid in full and never completed several portions of their contract. I believe that this shows incompetence and inconsistency by the people in charge and that they should be asked to resign. I feel that there was very little effort put into the public awareness by Kendick Keast and the planning and zoning.
Time.
I'll finish it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Mayor Sheik. My name is Tammy Lindsey. I reside at 1205 South Broadway. I'm a lifelong resident of Cortez. Myself, my husband Grant, and our sons were born here. And outside of a short period of time when I attended grad school in New Mexico, I have lived here my entire life. I am part owner in the Flower Cottage located at 30 North Market here in Cortez. My father-in-law, Mr. Richard Lindsey, and his wife Nelda, who has now deceased, started the business in 1960. Nelda, born in Cortez. Her mother, Rhoda Guthmaestral, born in Cortez. Making my son's fourth generation Cortisians. So I can tell you, needless to say, I have a vested interest in this town, in this area, and this community. My concerns as a business owner with regard to the proposed land use code are many. Many of these concerns have been previously voiced, from transparency, which I feel did not take place, to overreaching and excessive regulation of areas such as landscaping. As a business, we are required to file our sales tax online. The city has every one of those emails available. That could have been used to communicate with businesses, especially knowing the effects that this land use code would have on those businesses. With regard to required landscaping, I was told at a meeting with Mayor Sheik back in mid-December that it centered around water conservation. Now you tell me how requiring people to plant more plants that require water and putting in a drip system is anything near conserving water. Because right now, I can tell you, if this code were in place and we were required in our business to abide by that code, we would be using a lot more water than we currently are, that we as a business would be paying for, not the city. On this note, you know, I grew up in a rural community here. My father had to haul water. I know all about conserving water, trust me. You didn't waste water when you had to haul your portable water. Mentioned that to Mayor Sheik in our meeting and she said, well, not everyone has had that experience. Okay, then I say where our focus should be is on education and empowering people rather than forcing restriction and control. The main object is to create a community, if that's the object, is to create a community that we're proud of, then we need to work together, not behind closed doors to get This process has not had proper community input. The code, as has been previously pointed out, is confusing, ambiguous, and overreaching. I implore you to vote no, scrap it. Get people involved, many who have already said they would volunteer their time to do this. They're not getting paid, they'll volunteer to give you input. Do it and do it the right way. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I have a petition to deliver to the City Council members tonight. Please find this as a matter of public record. I am here today to represent 481 people approaching City Council asking to vote no on the land use code as it is presented today. I was selected to hand the document titled Cortez Citizens Protecting Property Rights to you as part of the public record of this meeting tonight. The document states, "We, the citizens and business owners of Cortez, oppose the new City of Cortez Land Use Code and request the City Council to vote no on January 28, 2020. As written in the new land use code, will impose an undue burden on homeowners and business owners. Improvements and expansions of existing homes and businesses will result in thousands of dollars of unnecessary expense. Thousands of dollars of unnecessary expense will be imposed upon new businesses and the construction of new homes. The majority of the signature owners have expressed that they may speak tonight if they are present. Signatures could be about 33.5 hours if everyone uses the four minutes allocated. The estimated time needed will fluctuate between 24 and 40 hours. 530 people total are asking each member of City Council to please vote no tonight. These 530 people are including 11 names that have already been turned in, as well as the signatures by the realtors, which is 49 to the best of my knowledge, that you have already received. To vote no tonight will allow all of us to work together and completely restart the process of the new land use code, based on the existing draft on the table, the new experiences of the last several weeks, and all the professional input that we still will receive. To all City Council members, please vote no tonight. Thank you."
City Council members, Mayor Sheik, community members, my name is Roman Jefferson. I live 18501 County Road J. I believe in the democratic process and I thank you for hearing my opinion. I may be drowned out, but I have a right. I am a certified arborist. I've been an arborist for three and a half years. I dedicate my life to studying trees and plants and their benefits to people. I think a lot of these benefits can be easily overlooked, but there's a lot of science and a lot of studying that goes into it. And I've brought with me a book that documents some of the benefits that are easily overlooked. I have not lived in Cortez for very long, but I would like to settle down here and raise a family. And I want, I want this community to be something I'm proud of and I am proud to see so many people here. I think the land use code, I compared it with other land use codes in the area and I don't think it's overstrict. I think some of the terminology found in the land use code is pretty common. And so I would like to pursue, maybe not passing the land use code in its current iteration, but at least pursue with community input, pushing this forward because I think our land use code is out of date and needs updating. If you're willing, I can leave this with you. I've dog-eared some important quotes that you can look at, graphs, talking about the importance of trees in our community. One of the most important things that I am really passionate about is when you take out all the trees in a community and you put in asphalt, it actually makes the heat island effect, it makes the city warmer. This is well documented, if you look at Phoenix, if you look at some of the cities in the Southwest, this is a current problem. And if our climate starts to get warmer and warmer, we're going to have serious issues in Cortez. Not only that, but trees and plants make the community look more appealing. I think that will bring more economic opportunities to the city and it's going to help business people and citizens alike. Thank you for hearing me and I'll leave this with you.
My name is Richard Cox. I've lived in the Cortez area off and on since 1956. In 1990, I moved to in-town, to the 701 Hartman Road. I'd like to express my strong opposition to the new land use code. I don't believe it was written with the spirit of Cortez in mind and believe it will do much harm to our community. I am confident that for the good of our city and residents who live here, City Council do the right thing and vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
My name is Amy Long and I have owned and operated Portia Preschool, 1515 South Oak Street in Cortez for 25 years. I'm licensed for 60 children, age 1 to 12. The proposed land use code concerns me as both a business owner and property owner in Cortez. I believe in free enterprise and I believe the council should vote no on the proposed land use code. Some of the following are my reasons. The above action was taken when most of the public was not even aware of what was being discussed, changed. There was very little input from the business community. The code passed planning and zoning with only a 3 to 2 vote with recommendation that the city approve it after working on it for three years. I certainly wasn't aware of any of this until about a month ago. The code was written by non-local experts who seem unaware of the fact that Cortez is an impoverished area which is experiencing little or no population growth. In the event, in the event that the council did pass the code, then a majority of the council is up for reelection, it is possible that this important code cannot even be cleared up by public questions because the people who passed it are no longer on the council. The part about extending the code to three miles outside the city limits seems illegal to me. There seems no reason why city code should stifle existing businesses, let alone discourage new businesses to locate here. It almost appears the authors of the code think that being in business is something bad that needs to be harnessed or curtailed. The new code for daycare goes against what is state law and regulated. Your new code states a person must be licensed or apply for a license with six or fewer children. State licensing changed and a person is exempt from getting a license and can legally care for up to four children, no more than two under the age of two, including their own children legally. Therefore, the code doesn't even coincide with what is already in place. I am highly regulated by state health, fire inspectors, because I am a large center, so am pretty familiar with the rules and regulations for childcare. Amy Dovelin is the licensing specialist for Archuleta La Plata, Montezuma, and San Juan Counties and is not able to be here tonight, but I have discussed these changes which are proposed with her. It seems the people changing the code are not aware of these current laws on childcare. This is a scenario. There's a high shortage of infant care in the Cortez area and a young mother who can't return to work because she can't find infant care may take one or two of her neighbor's kids in for a little extra income to make her mortgage, but couldn't do this with these codes and would either end up getting a fine of around $2,600 if someone turned her in or she would have to have such an expensive parking space paved that it would prevent her from being able to survive financially in this area. This is just one of the issues I am familiar with and am against, but truly think it is something that the community got involved with because there is great concern in the community of this passing vote. There are several other issues in the code that concern me also and only being informed by another community member, was I even aware of potential changes and that is the reason I am here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, I didn't get your last name, I'm sorry.
It's Amy Long.
Long, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kent Lindsey. I live at 1201 South Broadway here in Cortez. I'm a former county commissioner and I'd like to give you a little bit of history about planning and zoning in Montezuma County. 1995, it was decided by some folks that we needed to have planning and zoning in Montezuma County. So a committee was formed, meetings were held, and the end of that process resulted in the county commissioners in 1997 passing and sustaining a plan for Montezuma County and that's where it was left. When I took office in 97, we were charged with writing the rules and regulations to that. After much deliberation, we came up with a plan that we would hire somebody to help us out. Long story short, we were presented with about, oh, 300 pages of boilerplate copy and We took a look at it. After about 30 or 40 minutes, we rolled the dumpster up to the backside of the courthouse and out the window, the boilerplate stuff went. It was not tailored to Montezuma County in any way. No stakeholder meetings were made with the municipalities or with the groups that were represented at our meetings. So the commissioners and staff actually sat down and every, after every meeting, we b- began writing this ourselves. We fought over words like is and are and shall and will. What we came up with was not a perfect product by any means, so we rolled it out. We held eighteen meetings over approximately ten months. In those meetings, a lot of notes were taken, a lot of, a lot was put back into the plan. And at the end of that, we had learned that some of it wasn't comprehensible to the average person in Montezuma County. We'd learned along the way, and by no means take this to be derogatory. The comprehension and reading level of the people at Montezuma County at that time, we were told, was eighth grade. So in all this process, we bundled it back up, stopped again, and went to the schools, went to the eighth grade classes, found some English teachers and said, "Grade our work." They must have used a lot of red pencils, because we were back at it again for another four or five months, and we finally rolled it out. And in the process is what Montezuma County has now. But in those meetings, there were eighteen of all, there was some contention, of course. We met with the Montezuma County Landowners Association, each municipality, we went to Granger's, we went to anybody. We had room full of people like this at some, some we had eight people. One meeting, there was talk of ropes and guns. But after all was said and done, we thought we had a pretty good product. And the day that we passed that, we knew we had created a monster, because these monsters have a real tendency to grow. So don't be afraid to find the dumpster out back and take care of this, because what What I see is a lot of boilerplate, a lot of copy and paste, and a lot of stuff that wasn't created for Cortez. Thank you.
Dax Kokskey, one-five-three-two Arrowhead Lane. Now, my wife is at work right now. Got a job she is privileged to have. With this land use code, she will no longer have this job. This land use code does nothing but infringe on citizens' rights, liberty, and quality of life. In Cortez, Colorado, there are hundreds of healthcare aides. On every, on average, every healthcare aide has five clients. With five clients per hundred healthcare aides, that makes five hundred people in need of help in their home. These families are blessed to have helpers in their home. They're also low-income households. These families cannot afford a contractor to come change the way their house looks, their yard, driveways, storage, or anything else. On the other hand, they are not physically capable of doing it themselves either. This land use code is proposing to either fine them twenty-six hundred dollars or throw them in jail if they cannot fulfill the wishes of the writers of this code. This code is taking livelihood away from these wonderful families and everything they have worked for their whole lives. Most healthcare aides in Cortez, Colorado have families. With this land use code, there will be hundreds of healthcare jobs lost. If ninety percent of the healthcare agents have spouses, it's likely they cannot support their family on one income alone. They will be forced to quit their job and relocate. With that being the case, there will be a hundred and ninety jobs lost. If seventy percent of the families have one child, one, this is seventy kids taken out of the Cortez schools. If this land use code is passed and put into effect, there will be hundreds of jobs lost, hundreds of kids forced to start a new life, and hundreds of elderly families in jail or forced to start over. These people have spent countless hours of their lives honoring our small community and not just so tyrants and dictators can come take over their life and all that they have left. With this land use code, there will be a significant loss in the quality of life, and there will be hundreds of jobs lost. This land use code infringes on life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. There is no place for a plan like this that will dictate us as citizens. Thank you.
Sir, sir, I didn't get your name either, sorry. Dax Kokskey? Kokskey? Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council, my name is Bud Garner. I live at six-oh-eight North Washington. As I read for my statement, I want you to reflect back to the day you took the oath of office and try to decide whether you understood it or meant it. From the Declaration of Independence, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are initiated among men. From Amendment Five of the United States Constitution, nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the due process of law. From the Colorado Constitution, Article Two, Section Twenty-five, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the due process of law. From the Colorado Constitution, Article Two, Section Three, all persons have certain, natural, essential, and inalienable rights, among which may be reckoned the right of enjoying and offending their lives and liberties, of acquiring, possessing, and protecting He who does not control his own property does not own his property. From Section One of this proposed code, zero-one dot zero-one dot zero-two, the purpose, provide efficient and fair development approval procedures that can be applied uniformly and equally in the city in a manner that is respectful of the rights of the property owner. Four-hundred-and-sixty-one-page document of regulations do not show respect nor secure these rights. Rather, this document will be the final nail in the coffin of private property in the city of Cortez. From the code, Section One dot oh-one dot oh-three, the regulations of this code are the minimum standards applicable to all property within the corporate boundaries of the city of Cortez, Colorado. No man-made document can be fully comprehensive, and so minimum standard means no standard at all, since the whim of an apparatchik will rule. This document, and indeed the existing code, which encode tyranny in the city government, cannot be fixed to address any of these issues. You must vote tonight to kill this monster, and as Kent said, hurry to the dumpster.
My name's Al Fefor. Thanks for having all of us here. We appreciate everything you do. I just want to share a little story about what the role of planning, zoning should be. I have numerous properties in the area. I started a project many years ago and wanted to finish it up, and came to the city, planning, honoris paperwork, attorney in tow. We met, we left, I got out to the sidewalk, and my attorney said, "Whatever you do, don't go back in there, don't talk to those people anymore, and don't do your project." I don't think that is the kind of code that we want to have. Toss out the new one, and let's revise the old one and make it where the city's working for the taxpayers, instead of abusing us and just making it difficult to do a project. Thank you.
Melanie Scott McDonald, one-two-one-zero-seven, Highway one-forty-five, Dolores. I also own property in the town of Cortez. One of my main concerns with the newly-written land use code is that so much is left to interpretation. I believe every item needs to be specific. Nothing can be at risk of being taken the wrong way. I'm also concerned that a deal can be killed and ruin an opportunity for both seller and buyer if there's no financial resources for either side to comply with the new city requirements. It is making it a hardship for lower-income folks to live here. The working class is really struggling in this area. We should be encouraging locals to buy a home or build a home in our community. We don't want to discourage with more guidelines, requirements, rules, restrictions, and fees. Business owners as well. It's difficult to have a small business already, requiring a new property owner to, for example, landscape is costly and another burden to upkeep and maintain regularly. It feels like this code is cookie code or land use code, although not based on any other community, we're told, who designed it. Well, today I found out that the designer was indeed the people who did the Durango land use update. Another concern is two-thousand-six-hundred-fifty dollars per day, per violation fee is excessive and leaves the potential for abuse open in the future. Another concern, fifty-foot used to be the required access frontage for future development. If a minor subdivision was created with fifty-foot access frontage with the intent to develop in the future, it was allowed. It is now fifty-six feet required. Investors are left with property that was once able to be developed to now being a single-family dwelling. How many other changes are being made that are hurtful to local landowners and investors? How can we trust that their best interests are being considered and that their investments are safe? It seems impossible to consider every possible scenario an entire new land use code could affect. We have so many concerns about the new code that cannot be addressed. I realize our concerns are coming late in the game, but that does not make them less concerning. To write a brand-new code seems uncalled-for. The current system works and could be more effective with few tweaks. By keeping the current code, we can protect landowners' rights, and we can consider all parties involved in each specific situation to make adjustments as needed with well-informed, well-fought-out decisions. I respect the time and energy that went into creating this new land use code. I believe most who worked on it were considering our area's best interests. I know that it was well-fought out, and many things were considered. My concern is that there are too many things that have not been considered or are left to interpretation. I am in no way trying to be accusatory or offensive to those involved. I empathize with you and realize all the long hours and hard work that went into trying to make a positive change. And yes, we should have approached you with our concerns long ago. I apologize for that. In our defense, the lack of public outreach and notice have contributed to the delay in public concern. I hope you can understand that although it is unfortunate that we did not inform you sooner, we are now informing you. The new land use code cannot be considered as it is written now. I do not support replacing the land use code. I do not support tabling the vote on the newly-written land use code. I do support revising the current code with much community input, as was required with the grant that was rewarded. In an effort to support the community, the Four Corners Board of Realtors has organized a task force to consider and relay community concerns and to assist in the updating of the current land use code as needed. I personally joined this task force, as with my fellow brokers, Bonnie Leighton, Jason Witt, Terry McCain, and Brenda Bates. We are wanting to provide community input.
Jason Witt, eleven-eighty-one East Montezuma Avenue, Cortez, Colorado. Realtor, and as such, a protector of property rights. I would like for public record to submit the fifty-three signatures from the Realtor party stating, "We, as members of the Four Corners Board of Realtors, oppose the new city of Cortez land use code and request the city council vote no on January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. As written, the new land use code will impose undue burden on homes and business owners. Improvements, expansions of existing homes and businesses will result in thousands of dollars in unnecessary expenses and potential lawsuits. Thousands of dollars of unnecessary expenses will be imposed on new businesses and the construction of new homes." Madam Mayor, I personally want to thank you and the council for giving us this opportunity to be heard. I would like to share a quote, that there's no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about, and this community has discovered what they care about. I pray that you will utilize our strength, because our strength is the community. I ask you to give heed to what has been voiced, two weeks ago, tonight, and the petitions received. Listen to your community. Listen to those that speak, not just hear them, but listen to them. Listen to their concerns. They've done a magnificent job voicing how they feel. You might not agree with what we say, we might not agree with what you say, but your duty is to listen and to serve them. If they're saying no, we need to vote no. As far as my personal opinion, it's not a no, but it's not this and it's not now. Let's take what we've learned, improve it, grow from it. Let's make a plan that is predictable, clear, relevant, that enables growth and encourages and allows affordable housing, encourages new businesses to come and existing businesses to stay and thrive. That's what we need. This code doesn't do that. The individuals of this city, county, and along with these people in this room is what makes us great. We need to be heard, and I ask the council to listen to our voices and to vote accordingly. We are Cortez, and our strength is our community. Please utilize our strength.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Susan Thomas. I live at one-two-two-four-nine, Row G, Cortez. You've got my written comments in your packet. Tonight, I'm here to present letters from two city residents who are friends of mine and could not make it. The first one is from Lois Stein. She's eighty-nine and could not manage the access, so I'm just going to read her letter. Family considerations brought me here from Chicago twenty-five-plus years ago, and I have come to love and appreciate this small but active city in a breathtaking and unspoiled corner of the state. In addition to all of the natural amenities in the area, the city can be proud of its varied, comfortable neighborhoods, award-winning park system, pedestrian focus, numerous community events, and diverse population, to name just a few of many accomplishments. The city made wise choices when it established priorities and goals years ago, and it is time to renew the commitment to keeping both our residential neighborhoods and commercial districts healthy, well-planned, and livable. This land use code update is well-timed, it is reasonable, and I urge you to adopt it. Thank you for considering my comments, and that's Lois Stein. The second one is from Graham Johnson. He lives at seven-thirty-five North Beach Street. I live on North Beach and often wish that I could personally thank the early residents of my street who took the time, spent the money, and made the effort to plant trees and other landscaping that make it such a special neighborhood today. What they did was about more than property values or resale. My neighborhood is healthy and livable, and its residents want to stay there and take care of it, because they know they are in a good spot. All parts of our city can earn the loyalty of their residents if we stay current with development standards that respect people's needs and actively plan for them. Community life is changing so fast today that we can't rely... Community life is changing so fast today that we can't rely on an old code that never anticipated issues that are now common: congested traffic flow at peak hours, mixed land uses that need to coexist compatibly within the same neighborhood or district, limits on water supply, environmental concerns like air quality and wildfire, competition for new business and employment opportunities, to name just a few. Let's do what my neighbors did in the past and continue to respect our community through appropriate development standards, thoughtful public investment for the residents, for the benefit of residents, and an eye to the future. Let's not waste five years of work." So that's Graham Johnson. You've got my comments, but I'd like to just add one quick thing. We are really lucky in this area that our growth has been steady and incremental, and we've been able to stay ahead of it. When you look at places like Montrose or Colorado Springs, you see what happens when there's a boom. So if we anticipate the growth we eventually will have, I don't think there's any way of avoiding it, and it's good in many ways, let's get a code in place so we're not panicking when all of a sudden we have so many more residents and our code is so old. So that's an addition to my comments which you have in writing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sheik and City Council. My name is Donna Tanner, and I reside at 611 Henry Street in Cortez. I was born and raised in Cortez, and our six children all graduated from MCHS, going through the Cortez School System. I have lived in the same house for 54 years. Over these many decades, I have seen changes to our fair city, but it has not become the teeming metropolis that would warrant anything like this 400-plus-page proposal land use code. In my opinion, this code could kill our town as we know it today and discourage economic growth, not bring more in. We don't need that kind of land use code here in Cortez. Therefore, I'm respectfully asking all the members of the City Council to please vote "no," absolutely not on this land use code. Thank you.
My name is Emily Cole. I live at 701 Canyon Drive. So I'm a stay-at-home mom, and because I'm a stay-at-home mom, and you can't make it on a single income in this town, it's pretty much anywhere you can't, I decided to open an in-home daycare, which meant I had to go through the state, go through that whole process. This is the paperwork I had to have just to start the daycare. This isn't anything other than just to open my doors. That does not include the cost of starting a daycare, the cost of getting the license, the background checks, the first aid, the CPR, everything that you have to have in order to get that license from the state. The reason most people that I have talked to start watching kids in their home is because they want to be a stay-at-home mom, but they can't afford it. So they take in one, two, three kids, and as it's been stated, state only regulates four. So if they have to start, if they have to go through this process to watch those kids, what does it gain them? How are they making more money enough to make it worth it to not have to do this because they're just having to pay more to do this than it would be to put their kids in daycare and just go get another job? And on top of that, it is, there's so many people who've come to me since I've closed my childcare business down and asked me to reopen a daycare because there is such a need in this community for childcare. And what you guys are trying to put in with this is curbing that. You're making it even harder to find childcare. And the hours that you put on it, from six to eight? So what about the nurse that works the night shift at the ER? What are they supposed to do with their kid? Because they don't have somebody at home to take care of it, they can't take it anywhere, so do they just not go to work? I'm confused on that. I just, I have not read, read this whole code. It's ridiculously long. I don't have the time for that. But what I have read is not what we need for this community, and it will hurt us more than help us. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Stephen Candelaria, 1656 Golf Course Lane, Cortez, Colorado. I just want to start off quick and easy, saying that I'm not in favor of this new proposed land use code, and I would encourage you all to vote "no" on it this evening. The reasons why I believe this are vast, and obviously, we don't have much time, so I kind of just prepared a blanket statement for y'all this evening. I'd like to ask, what is the purpose of a land use code? And I'd like to ask everybody to think about that when they're putting that into place. I believe that a land use code should give guidance and structure to a community without being overbearing and overreaching. I believe that this new proposed land use code is a direct infringement on property rights, and I do not believe that it would be wise to introduce it so to our community. Not only that, I believe that a land use code should not put undue burden on our community, whether that's by means of monetary or other. You should not have undue burden on your citizens just to have extra regulation and government on them. Not only that, I've heard many people say that are in favor of this code, that this would give some sort of economic stimulus to our community. As an engineer, I like to look at numbers and facts, and I'd like to see where are the statistics that support that. Not only that, I believe that we need to analyze our economy thoroughly. I'm not talking about on a national level, I'm talking about here, in Cortez and Cortez alone. We cannot encourage economic stimulus based on resources that we don't have. I believe that this code refers to multiple types of things that we simply do not have here. Therefore, why do we have a code that would have things, again, simply that we don't have? We need to analyze what our economy needs, what kind of resources that we have, and adopt a code that would indeed encourage some sort of economic stimulus based on the resources that we do have. Not only this, I believe that the time to draft and revise should not be extravagant. I believe the longer that we draw out revisions and drafting, we have a tendency to get caught in the weeds, regardless of what we're referring to. Whenever we get caught in the weeds, we have a tendency to lose sight of what our goal was in the first place. And it sounds like initially, when we set out to adopt a new land use code, it was for good intentions, and I believe that the time that it took to do this, we all lost sight of what really we were going after. So with that being said, I propose that we review and revise what we already have. I think taking a conservative approach and utilizing the code that we have, revising it to make it better for our community, would be the best course of action. Not only that, I believe that we need to foster and encourage thorough community interaction. Obviously, I believe the case here tonight is that this is thorough community interaction. However, this is at the tail end of the course. I believe that we need to have this type of community interaction from beginning to end, and at that point, you will have heard your citizens, and you will adopt a code that they truly believe that they drafted and will work for them. To end, I believe that we need a land use code that is for the people and by the people, and that's not anybody other than the citizens of Cortez, Colorado. Thank you.
Hi, Stephen Foote, 11636 Row 28.3, Dolores. A lot of people, again, have said probably better than I can what I wanted to say tonight, so what I wanted to do is give you some background. My wife and I decided it was time to leave California. We decided on Colorado, we could have moved anywhere in this state we wanted. We decided climate on the West Slope was much nicer than on the Prairie side of the state. We traveled and stayed in all the communities between here and Grand Junction. We decided this area was the best of both worlds. You go just outside the city limits, and you got open country, cattle, farms. Within the city limits, you got all the shopping that we were not used to. We came from a rural community in California, and it was a 40-mile drive to the nearest supermarket. So we thought we would have the best of everything. But what I see here is, instead of giving people an incentive to fix up their properties, you want to punish them. My understanding that the center dividers on Main Street costs a million dollars. Besides being ugly, you could have used that money for small business loans or give people reimbursement for fixing up their property. Carrots tend to always work better than sticks. And the last thing is, my understanding is, this ordinance is going to try to apply to county areas, not the city. I don't know where the City Council thinks they have the authority to go beyond the city limits. And like I said, pretty much everybody else has said what I wanted to say. Thanks.
My name's Charlene O'Dell, and I have a business at 43 North Maple. And I started this business in January of 2012, going on nine years. I overcame the five-year mark, thanks to the community. There's a need for my business, but with the land use codes, I don't know if I'm going to be able to excel and continue with this. Who's going to have you hem their pants? Do their embroidery? Do long-arm quilting? I had my son move here three years ago with his family so my grandchildren could learn the business that I have, and to learn the ranching business that my husband has, because guess what? You guys have steak and hamburger, and it comes from the ranch, not from the grocery store. It has to get there from us ranchers. But anyway, they moved here. How can I continue my business with the land use codes that you have proposed in addition to my grandchildren and other young children that can continue to make this community grow? So I ask that you guys reevaluate, take the time, and say "no," and then revisit the community. Network analysis to ensure as many people as possible are included in decision-making, aiming for a broad and meaningful participation in developing and evaluating options for a new land use code. Thank you.
My name's Jody Henley. I live at 255 West Fourth Street. I am here tonight in opposition of the proposed land use code. In a journal article Tracy Hughes has quoted as saying, "A primary goal of the rewrite is to make the language more accessible to the general public. One thing we would like people to know, we would like this to be understandable by the average citizen, less jargon-oriented." The proposed land use code meets neither of these goals. The language is ambiguous and therefore subject to interpretation. Only clear, concise language will ensure consistent application of regulations by current and future city employees with just, excuse me, with just an impartial treatment to all Cortez citizens. City officials should focus on regulations that are necessary for the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare, not on the designs of our businesses and houses. The regulations in the proposed land use code go beyond the reasonable authority of the city and are a violation of property rights and, excuse me, of our 14th Amendment right guarding against arbitrary invasion of privacy by government officials. A few of the most outrageous portions of the proposed land use code are raising the penalty for noncompliance from $300 to $2,650, requiring a homeowner to engage an architect or civil engineer, which will result in thousands of dollars of unnecessary expense, and prohibit homeowners from enhancing their existing properties and improving their quality of life, and for standards for landscaping that are not reasonable in our semi-arid climate. The proposed land use code is designed for a city with economics and demographics which are far different from Cortez. There is an uproar in communities all across the United States where Kenda Keast is involved in county or city planning. The foremost objection by citizens and officials of these communities is that the plan presented to them does not represent their demographics and desires, and that the greater populace of the community was not engaged. These are the exact objections we are hearing from the citizens of Cortez. The officials in several of these communities voted to dump the Kenda Keast plans, even though they had already made a significant investment, rather than implement a plan that was detrimental to the community. There is no shame in forfeiting a deal that has gone wrong. There is shame in going against the wishes of the community and implementing a plan that will hurt the community, just to save face or serve your own agenda. I ask you to vote "no" tonight and kill the proposed land use code. To be effective, elected officials must listen to and be responsive to the needs of all their constituents and make choices that are, excuse me, make choices that are acceptable to the majority. I implore you, listen to the majority and do what is right for our community. Thank you for listening.
My name's, my name's Rafe O'Brien. I live at 403 South Market Street. A lot of people already told you guys about, you know, a lot of these issues here today. I'm just going to share with you one of my stories that I had with Tracy and Neva whenever I had a meeting with them. They brought up the three-mile rule. I went ahead and asked them, what exactly did that mean? They said that it really meant for them, in their representation, is that it meant the cohesive roads and for roads and subdivisions outside of our town. I understood that to the point of, if we did grow and we needed that, they would need to put those into stipulation. I did give them two examples. We have two subdivisions that are within our city limits that actually don't follow the cohesive roadways and around them. You look at Brandon's Gate, all of the community around there is a curvy neighborhood. And if, if what they said is to represent this three-mile, that neighborhood would not be able to be that way, it would have to represent its cohesive neighborhood. Same with down here on Southern Bluff. I gave them both examples of that, and I said, what would happen if a new subdivision came in similar to those? There was nothing really that they could give me for any answers on that, which goes to show that there's a lot of gray area and interpretation for this three-mile, even if it doesn't necessarily go into the county. They, it still was not, and it has not been enforced by what's in some of our planning and zoning now. Another thing that I brought up to them was, oh man, I forgot my train of thought. I brought up to them the childcare, which Tracy actually has child in a daycare, and actually, she told me the story of her having multiple children and how it is a hassle for them picking them up. But when I asked her, what would happen if her child provider needed to change that, both of them looked at me with nothing to say. And I basically told Tracy, I said, that means that your babysitter, your babysitter would have to then abide by this, and you're wanting to do something that you're, basically, you wouldn't be able to use anymore. And that threw me off, too. The third and final thing that I asked them, I said, so what, what happens if, this is all supposed to be for new construction, is what I was told. What happens if or when, because there is a gray area verbatim in there, if they decide to not issue permits for, or what would be grandfathered in? My example is, what if your driveway's not paved and you're going to withhold the permit to pave the driveway? She then told me that that was something that couldn't happen, couldn't be done, and everyone would throw a fit, and there would be a lawsuit. In my opinion, why would we go to have such gray area wordage if we're going to possibly have a lawsuit? And there's no way for this code to say that this is all new. I asked, I said, what, how are we to know what's I asked, I said, "What, how are we to know what's grandfathered in? How are we to know what is to be represented in this?" Nothing. There was nothing. I even brought up the fact that we have the four-two pitch in the code and they said, I said, "If somebody, let's just say, needed to re-trust their house, what would they have to do?" And she said, "Technically, they would have to re-trust it with our code, even if it's grandfathered in." So when I had my meeting with them, there were lots of gray areas, lots of things, and lots of weird verbiage that I even got them stated on. And I'm thirty years old and I don't know very much about this stuff, but I definitely read and tried my hardest to understand. And on that, with social media, we could have had a huge, we have twenty-first technology. Social media could have given you guys the outreach and the readily availability of all these people here tonight, rather than stifling them. And actually, it has shown more of a bad side for our community, our boards, but it's actually proven that social media can bring other people together instead.
My name is Alan Mays, Road Twenty-One, Lewis. I've commented to you before on this land use code. I first commented when this land use code was tabled to give us the opportunity. I started out by saying I wasn't going to bring up the medians on Main Street, and I'm not going to bring that up again tonight. I am here to talk to you about the proposed land use code. What I, I stated at that land use, at that meeting was that you have a land use code that can be amended. I saw how easy things can be amended by this council when the jail time was taken out of the new land use code. But the, the amount of money that was in there for fines is still part of it. I have had an opportunity to review the new proposed land use code in more depth and it has only made it more obvious that it is not a well-developed document. If I understand this council and some of the comments, I do not believe you achieved the results that you said you wanted. This document lacks clarity and invites conflicts, as you've already heard. There are excessive fines associated with this document and noncompliance. These are excessive for this area and you know it. These fines are intended to be punitive and to silence opposition. You did not do community outreach that you were required to and it is not helpful you to keep insisting that the public does not understand or have been misinformed. This land use code does not promote growth. There are nineteen-plus closed storefronts on Main Street. Any business startup here needs to, needs the support from the county residents such as myself to be sustainable. Tourism is not a year-round revenue generator. You increase costs of doing business will result in more businesses being lost or moving into the county. This council needs to vote no on this land use code and amend the existing one. Thank you very much.
Short. Hi, my name is Kristy Ross. I'm, I'm not that short. I mean, I'm short, but, okay, thank you. All right. Again, my name is Kristy Ross. I live at two, two-five-six-five-two-zero, Road twenty-four-point-five. And I am in that three-mile radius around Cortez. And I'm so impressed with everybody that is here and that has spoken. This is very powerful and I hope that y'all are taking notice. I appreciate the effort that you put in and, and I did bring my little written thing, but most of these things have all been covered. So I'm going to speak from my heart instead of from my little written practiced paper. And the reason I want to speak from my heart is because I've walked this path already. I'm the newbie. I am a Colorado native. I was born and raised in Delta County. My grandparents homesteaded in Delta and Montrose County. I moved here because my daughter married a, a toger that they, homesteaded in Macammo Canyon. And I have a grandbaby and she is a, I don't know, fifth, sixth generation Montezuma County native. But where I came from, Delta, is a very similar community to Cortez. It's rural ag, but yet there are thriving businesses there as well. And they decided a few years ago that they had to have new land use codes. So they didn't spend a million dollars, but they spent several thousand getting new land use codes that could tell everybody how to fix their house, the kind of landscape they needed, setbacks, et cetera. And the board that was there all loved it. It was a great land use code and it was going to drive Delta into the future. And then they all eventually got off the board and the people that worked for the city got off and moved on to other jobs. So the new people had no idea how to implement all of those codes and they only had three hundred pages. And so they ended up in a mess. So you know what they did? Okay, this is for you guys, as much as it is for you. If you apply for anything in Delta, the city of Delta now, you have to go to Denver. You have to apply in Denver because Denver said, "Oh, well, we'll just step in there and help you." You know, you don't, the council changes all the time, so we'll just run that for you. So you have to apply, you pay your fees, you pay your renewals, you pay everything to Denver. You have to send it to Denver. And trust me, I've had family members that have literally had to take their paperwork and drive to Denver because it, you can't do it. If you're doing a big project, you have to take it to Denver. And right now, y'all may think this is a great idea, but you need to throw it out. You need to vote it down tonight and start over, utilizing the knowledge that you have right out here. You got a lot of smart folks. Use them. Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Hager. I live at thirteen-oh-six Cottonwood Street. My grandparents own property in Cortez. My parents own property in Cortez. Me and my children own property in Cortez and my grandchildren are being raised here. I'm soon to be seventy years old and I want to share some really personal details here because I feel like you have totally eliminated a large section of our community. I live so far below the poverty level, I'd need a ladder to reach it. When my property taxes become due, I don't buy groceries that month. My car needs repaired so that I can safely travel outside of the city limits. This land use code is endangering my health and welfare. My property needs improvements. Your land use codes make it impossible for me to make those improvements. I can't meet them. I have saved, I have done without, so that I could save enough money to buy materials to make those improvements on my home under the current land use code. But I can't do it if you do this. And you might say, "Well then, just sell your property and go live in a nursing home." But that's not an option either because I could only live there for a year. And I guarantee you, I plan on being around here for at least ten more. I'm not alone in this. We are a depressed area. We have people that are barely scraping by. I'm fortunate, I at least have enough money to pay my bills. I at least have enough money to pay my property taxes and my insurance. And most of the time, I have money to put groceries on my table. But if you pass this, you're telling me I'm worthless and I'm not worth your time. You're telling every other low-income family that's barely getting by that you don't care about them and that's shameful. You are infringing on our rights to the pursuit of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I strongly encourage you to dump this moustross, this thing that you have created and start all over again. And please include some of your senior citizens and your low-income people because they are just as valuable to this community as anyone else. Thank you.
I live at seven-seven-nine Aspen Drive. I work kind of a small business here in town. I love my job. I love my bosses. My wife, she doesn't work. She stays at home and takes care of my kids, which is great. But if this land use goes through, my bosses are going to get massive amounts of unnecessary expenses, which will cut into my paycheck, which will cut into everybody I work with's And I understand that doesn't seem like a lot, but I live paycheck to paycheck. Everything that my kids have, that my wife has, that I have, comes once every two weeks. And if my paycheck falls below a certain amount, I will lose most of what I own. And that's a terrifying prospect because I have a two-year-old and a six-year-old. So I'm, don't normally get involved in politics, but I strongly urge you vote no on this land That's all I got.
I'm Donna Foster and I live at twenty-ten East Downey Street. And I'm a former council member. And I wasn't expected to come here and say anything, but as a former council member, I hope you guys are listening to your community. They're begging and pleading with you to please vote no. I'm one of them. Listen to what they're telling you. Please go back to the drawing board. Take a realtor, take a lender, take a developer, take some people from the community, take a senior citizen. Listen to what they're saying and bring this back. Please vote no.
Let's see, you are a mayor. Yeah. My name is Caitlin Alexander. I'm from one-one-six-one East Montezuma Avenue. I am a lender that was just mentioned, so I'd be more than happy to help with that as well. But I'm also a fifth-generation rancher in Montezuma County. My family has owned businesses in this county for over twenty years and currently owns a business in this town as well. I've known several of you for many years, some of you from high school even as my librarian. With this being said, I work in Durango. And as someone had mentioned before, there was a code that was going through Durango not too long ago that was very similar to the one that is on the table right now for Cortez. I watched that community struggle. I watched that community break down over an overpriced, vague, misfit of a land code. And while it was made with the intent to help the citizens and the business owners, we found that it was something very different at the end of that. And so I hope that you all are truly listening to us all this evening and you don't allow that same breakdown here in Cortez because you will lose businesses, you will lose citizens that will go somewhere else. And as someone that lives in this community and works somewhere else that says, "I live in Cortez right now," I'd really like for that not to be a shameful thing. Because there are so many of us that live in this community and we're proud to be here and want to help the community and our businesses, I ask that you please vote no. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Bob Ower and I live at two-six-two-two-three County Road M. And I also have several properties here in town. I'm a real newbie. I've only lived here ten years. But this is our home now. We came here on purpose. We came here for the freedoms that are here. And I am a refugee of a Lane Kending project in Flagstaff, Arizona. And I could not run from that place fast enough. It took me fifteen years to get away from it. I lived there forty-one years, thought I would never leave. But this land use code is so oppressive, so overreaching. I can't believe that you didn't check that out. If I start out to buy something, I check it out a lot of different ways. Read about it, do some research, call up other people that have it, and then I make my own decision. If you'd have called Flagstaff and talked to any of us that own businesses there and said the name Lane Kending, we'd say, "Please don't speak that in our establishment." It's that bad. Please don't vote for this thing. Yes, we need codes. Yes, they need to be in all different areas, but this is not the one. And I'm here to tell you, I'm lucky to have survived it. Thank you.
My name is Lynette Ward. I live at seven-eighty-three Aspen Drive. My concern is for the elderly and the disabled people who cannot do these things for themselves. And they cannot afford the two thousand dollars you want to date. How many of you guys up there could afford that? You don't live on a fixed income. You don't live on six hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. These people cannot even get out of bed and take care of themselves. And you want to just jack up everything, make them change their homes around, make them do it to your codes? They can't do it. Are you guys going to pay for that? Are you going to take care of them? Because you guys are here for us. So I strongly suggest a no. If not for us, for our seniors and our disabled. Thank you.
I didn't get your last name, ma'am.
Ward.
Ward, thank you.
Hi, City Council workers. My name is Bob Gafford, two-fifteen South Linden. We have several acres in the city limit. We own the billboards. What you're actually wanting us to do is impossible. There's not enough water. There's, where do you get the water from? It's impossible to do it your way. My family has been here since the eighteen hundreds. We do know what it's like. And everything is so vague and so turned around in this, it's unbelievable. All I can say is drive all the directions out of town and look at those billboards and then find out where the water comes from because there isn't any. Thank you.
My name is Tiffany Randall. I own property at five-nineteen North Texas Street. I know I'm not an unfamiliar face here. I know that I have, for the past nine months, have spoke out against this proposed land use code. My husband and I have taken a deep interest into the proposed land use code as we are business and property owners within the city limits of Cortez. We have attended every meeting in the past nine to ten months regarding the proposed land use code that was open to public. We've been to workshops, special... We've been to workshops, special sessions, planning and zoning commission meetings, meetings with city staff, including Tracy and Niva with the Planning Department, a meeting with Mayor Sheik. We wrote letters like we were asked after attending these meetings. We got responses about three months later. We feel like this has been a one-sided conversation so far. I hope that we can change that tonight. Mayor Sheik, I read your editorial on Friday. And while I have to admit, I really do agree with you. We all have a stake for the future of Cortez. We want our town to be economically thriving and appealing. I was quite disappointed to keep reading and find out that you did not address any of our concerns that the public has expressed to you. We do want to see the best for Cortez. If we didn't, we wouldn't live here. But what we do not want is economic hardship for new businesses trying to enter our community, financial strife for existing business expansion, the increase in cost of housing development, fines being quintupled. $2,650 per day and each day that you are out of line with this code is a new fine. That does not seem like the city of Cortez reaching out a friendly hand to work with the public. Ambiguous and vague language that is left to interpretation of staff opens the door for corruption and the code being enforced inequitably, and all of the other unintended consequences that this 400-plus-page document creates. Why is a code that city staff has admitted that they don't even like entire sections of, and they aren't sure how they will go about managing and regulating this code? Why are we even here discussing this tonight? This is, if adopted, this is law. You will be required to regulate everything that is in that code. I kindly ask, where has the transparency been throughout this project? It seems this proposed land use code was doomed from the beginning when Mayor Sheik, along with previous city staff, submitted a grant proposal on July 25th of 2014 without city council consent. Where is the documentation for the RFP process and why was Kendi Keys Collaborative chosen? The submittal for approval came from Tracy Hughes that states they were the best value for the community. What kind of value does this proposed document bring? The final draft of the proposed land use code was published on October of 2018, but was done so on a page buried on the city of Cortez website that you would have to know where to look for it to actually find it. I'm about out of time, so I guess I'll finish later. Thank you.
Ed Rice, 27980 Road M. I spoke on the 14th in opposition as far as business in town here and stuff, so I'm going to be really brief tonight. I just wanted to bring up something that was brought up a little bit earlier by one of the speakers as far as disposing of this motion. I think most of you know, I taught at the high school here, retired from Montezuma-Cortez High School. One of the things that I taught was parliamentary procedure, so I think I'm fairly well-versed on that. In 28 years of teaching, probably more years than not, I had parley pro teams that went to the state level and above. If you Google something on parley pro, I may not be that person that's going to answer on the other end probably, but I feel like I am pretty well-versed on it at least. So one of the things that was brought up earlier was about tabling this motion. I urge you to dispose of this motion properly by voting it down. The purpose in Robert's Rules of Order for tabling a motion is to take care of business more important than is pending. I don't think there's anything more important pending right now than what this is right here. Another part of Robert's Rules of Order is never use tabling a motion to kill a motion or delay its consideration. So dispose of it properly by voting it down and getting rid of this motion. Thank you.
My residence is located at 21.4 Cortez, and I doubt if I'm going to speak as eloquently as my daughter has just done. And I am blessed to have my children live in this community. With that being said, living on 21.4 does not mean that I do not have interest or passion for this community. My husband and myself, we own 28 properties within the city of Cortez. We have three businesses within the city of Cortez. Wow. What do I say that I haven't said for the last 10 months? I do believe that we all need some governing for health and safety, but we do not need government overreach, and this is just what this proposed land use code is. You need to vote no on this proposed land use code unless you have read it in its entirety and agree with all of its ambiguous and capricious language. This document as written is arbitrary, and it is left to the planning and zoning administrators' interpretation. I have read this code extensively, and every time that I read this document, I see more and more of this haphazard language, and this will lead to inequitable application of the code. Excuse me. One of the reasons stated for the proposed code was that the old code is hard to interpret. This proposed land use code leaves so much to interpretation. Who decides what is similar, substantial, offensive, unwholesome, et cetera? The planning and zoning administrator? The same person who was designed, assigned to the massive public outreach campaign, but then admitted that the meetings were poorly attended? This should have been a clue that the method that was used for public outreach failed. One newspaper article concerning the three public meetings that were held, which was printed on February 8th, 2019, three days before the first meeting, was buried on Page 7A of The Journal. There were no Facebook posts, and there was nothing printed on the website. This equals failure. Also, where was Kendi Keys Collaborative? Were they not present? And weren't they supposed to have virtual town halls for continuous community participation? Neighborhood meetings in each district and other effective methods for community input to ensure that our voices were being heard and acted upon? I find that this entire process from beginning in 2014 to present has been flawed. Transparency has failed, engagement of public participation has failed, and now our faith in our city planner has failed. It was also noted that we needed a new code that involves analyzing and developing a more appropriate framework that doesn't send the planners and/or citizens to multiple sections of the code to find and guess at the answer to one question. The planner said we needed a new code that would be user-friendly and the professional jargon simpler to understand. Sadly, this also has not been accomplished. Mayor Sheik, in your editorial published on January 24th, you said that 43,000 people in 26 communities were interviewed. Why, I ask you, did you not start with your own community right here?
I live at 25401 County Road H. We've got three commercial properties in town, one residential rental property. We're 100% against this code. Our town, our community, our people can't afford it, whether on the commercial side or the residential side. This proposed land use code not only infringes on our property rights, it is also without knowledge and participation of the citizens of Cortez, and it is very poorly written. I've been in business in Cortez for over 40 years. I've owned a retail store here since 1998. We love our area, but we don't like folks trying to make it into a restrictive place like Boulder, California. That's not Cortez. That's not why we live here. We don't want it. At the inside of this ludicrous new land code, the city government officials should have at least asked the business people, along with the residents, what they thought about it. Not one of you came or called my store and asked a single question about it, if I was in favor of it or if I was against it. I would have had a few questions for you. Why do you want to change it? What's your reasoning? What's wrong with the one we've got? It's time for some soul searching. When you go back and you take your vote, think about what all these people have said. There's been a lot of different viewpoints and the amount of hurt it will cause our community. I ask that you reject this 100%, and if we do need to make some changes in the code we have, let's start at that point, and let's get the community involved. Thank you.
Mindy Nelson wrote in. During the meeting with the city planner and the realtors, at the beginning of the meeting, the planner stated that they didn't want to use the same jurisdiction as the other counties. Then what is a comprehensive plan? It's an action plan that has been established across the nation. It is to reorganize human society, and it encourages local government to cooperate. It is to redistribute wealth and to use zero economic growth. Where did it come from? It has been led through the United Nations as it is related to land use. Tracy said the comprehensive plan was written by employees back in 2008. It was specifically written for the city. She said it came from the understanding of the world. Would that have something to do with the global planner network? The process was not adhered to as specific in the grant application for the proposal in 2014. The contract task A2 was not fulfilled as per Heart and Soul, and no public meeting aside from three in February of 19. Phase three of Heart and Soul was clearly not followed. It states revisit community network analysis to ensure as many people as possible are included in decision-making, aiming for broad and meaningful participation in developing and evaluating options. It has been seen. We didn't have the expectations of the DOLA grant by KCC contract. There was no massive outreach as promised. Phase three of Heart and Soul ignored. Mayor Sheik signed seven staff submitted grant proposals without council review in City Planner Hughes designated as responsible city staff members for Kendi Keys Collaborative in May of 2015. The key objection of this grant for land use code and zoning map stated in 2014 to not send planners and/or citizens to multiple sections of the code. In the realtors' meeting, the part talking about manufactured homes as a single-dwelling home, then having to refer back to the residential section. It was said, this is very confusing. She said, that's the risk you take. Our intention is not to be heavy-handed, not to regulate the people. Our intention is to fill aesthetics to the community. The code is very heavy-handed in regulating with heavy permits, fines, and fees. The fines per day is just absurd. Going from $500 a day to $2,650 a day, that is the maximized fine for the whole state in Cortez? After talking to some council members and discovering they haven't even read the 400 pages or discussed it. Everybody should know the whole code and know what they are passing. In the January 14th work session, a couple of council members even asked for more time and read the revised plan. There can be good planning without big government overreach. And I have more, and I'll come on my second time. Thank you.
Ma'am? Ma'am, you didn't give your name or your address. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you then.
I'm sorry. Mindy Nelson wrote in. Oh, here.
Oh, this is your second time speaking then already?
No.
Oh, you spoke at the citizen participation. Sorry. Okay. Thank you.
My name's Gene Backstrom. I was born in a small house in Cortez.
Sir, could you state your name again? I didn't understand you.
Gene Backstrom.
Okay. And your address, please.
Pardon me? I was born in a small house in Cortez, Colorado, 74 years ago. It's always been a great place to live. I've been proud to live here. I believe the people who laid out this town did a very good job of laying it out with a nice bar in Main Street. I've seen quite a bit of change here. It's still a good place to be. There've been a lot of improvements. Some of the changes have been improvements. We have a place here that... One positive change, I suppose, would be a few years back, they did a very nice job of overlaying Main Street with concrete. Monolithic pores. One pore that you shouldn't chop into pieces. It loses its strength. Anyway, I guess we did decide to chop a few holes in it, but some of the things that I sort of question are... The one little place out by McDonald's is a big blob of concrete with 11, by my count, signs sticking out of it that have no purpose except to try to direct you around that big blob of concrete. I don't really understand that, but I do like the concrete Main Streets. I was fortunate enough to grow up in this place. I was a member of the last class to graduate from the old high school that's still standing. That was pretty good. I liked it. Then, for some reason, we decided that we needed another school. I'm not sure what it was, but we got a new school, which has already been torn down. I don't know about the wisdom there. One thing that I question about the wisdom there is we seem to have a problem with homeless people in Cortez. people in Cortez. And I would think that a building of that size would be able to house and feed a lot of people, certainly more than we have here. Okay. I better hurry the hell up. What I want to say, I guess, is the place is still a good place to live. Two or three more words. We haven't torn it up. We haven't screwed it up too bad without any regulations. We've kind of been wise in our decisions, and the town is still a great place to be. Why must we have the whole 400 and some pages to tell us what not to do? Thank you.
Your time is up.
I'm Jenny Totacini, and I live on Kaylee Circle. And my husband and I are business owners, we're landowners within the city of Cortez, and I would just like to each ask each one of you to please vote no. This is detrimental to the building community, not just the people who build the houses, but the people who live in the houses, who it's hard enough to build anyway to reach that goal, to have that dream. And this will make it even harder. So Ms. Betts, Mr. Lucero, Mr. Noyes, Mayor Sheik, Mr. Keel, Mr. Levy, please vote no.
My name is Glenn Layton. I live at 45 East Andrew Lane, and I have a business in town. I'm a firm believer in the free enterprise business system. And I believe that people can find, young kids can find a home in town that might be a real fixer-upper, might be a better knocker-downer, and then refixer-upper. But with the free enterprise system, they can do this. When we get land use codes and different regulations and different pile-on costs, that takes that out of the equation. The diamond in the rough then becomes the city's problem to develop and help develop. It also makes it so that anybody that can see the diamond in the rough and make it happen can't. We have a good land use code in place. I think it's worth salvaging that. I remember how controversial it was when it was going to be passed back in the day, but it works at this point. It has up to now, and we've got places that we can fix it. And on a board of appeals and adjustments, which I do serve on, I would like to see us maybe address this situation this way instead of with what is proposed here. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Is there anybody that would like to speak for the first time?
My name is Teresa Oaks. I am a local business owner here in Cortez at 708 South Broadway. I'm not going to list a bunch of reasons why you should say no. You've heard them all. I just want you to hear from a local business owner that please do not pass this code. We need you to vote no in order to keep these local businesses, these local family-owned businesses, running. We need to vote no on this. Thank you.
Hi. My name's James Rodd. I'm a business owner and a landowner, residential and city limits. I think you should vote no on this. What I like is the community outreach. I didn't...I spent a lot of time on the road, and I didn't know a lot that was going on. It was brought to my attention. My business is in industrial park, and it's brought to my intention that with the land use code, that we would have to block our businesses' view from the gear reserve park that's sitting there. The only two businesses that are close to that is mine and Sheldon Randall. And we're elevated, and our property line is a city sewer. Like, you can't go plant a tree or put something on it, which tells me whoever wrote this hasn't looked at anything. They don't even know what's sitting there. And with Hurley coming up here and the people saying, "As being an employer," I wasn't sure that I would come and speak until my employees brought this up, because two of my employees are very, very young, and very proud to say that I pay them over minimum wage, but they struggle, they're dual-income families, and the childcare. One of the employees where their kids are being watched, it was brought to their attention that the lady might not be able to do it anymore. And he came, and he's telling me that I might not be able to work for you. And I'm like, "Well, why is that?" And he's like, "Well, if we lose our childcare with this lady, we can't afford to go do something different." And my wife and I did the numbers, and it makes more sense for one of us just to stay home, and I think that's what I'm going to do. And long and short, this is going to take jobs away. I look at it, if I have to go in and I have to increase my landscaping, and I got to pit offensive, and I got to do this stuff, I'm already taking hits on my workman's comp and all this stuff, that I would consider moving my business out of Cortez, because I can't afford to invest any money that's not going to bring me more money to my business. I'm already taking huge, huge hits. I do want to share an experience, because the other thing that bothers me with happened in Atlanta, your house is like I heard you doing the vinyl and doing things like that. With my business, I get to travel a lot, and two years ago, I got invited by the government to go to China. I was very scared, because through education in school and being communist and the things that you learn, you know, I was nervous. And when I went over there, it wasn't what I expected. Then I got to look around, and I was there as an advisor, because they want to build off-road cars like what I build. And I got to sit in on some very big government meetings and stuff. When I was driving around, and I was there for about a month, two different times, and I started looking around, and I'm like, "Where's the neighborhoods?" And they're like, "What?" And I was like, "Where do people live? Like, what do you mean?" I was like, "Single dwelling? Where's the houses with the swing set in the back of the yard, and where's all this stuff?" Like, "No, it's government housing everywhere, skyscrapers." You know, nobody has a truck with a trailer, with a motorcycle, with a UTV driving around the road. If you live in a single dwelling, you're either extremely rich, or you're super poor in the middle of nowhere. And when you start telling people that you can't have vinyl side on your house, you can't do this, or you can't do that, we're one step to 100% government living, which is not what America's about. That's the main reason that you guys should vote no. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Marion Rodd. I just happen to be that young man's mother. I live at 11773 Highway 145. I have a business here, and I also own property, second generation. I want to tell you a short story. I'm not a native from Cortez, but I did graduate here. I got married at a very young age. I was a junior in high school. My husband is from Colorado. He talked about how beautiful Colorado and Cortez. "I never heard of Cortez. I lived in California. I knew Disneyland, the malls, and all that, what I thought was good stuff." He said, "We should move to Colorado." I said, "Well, that sounds good. It's a beautiful state." I said, "So where's Cortez?" He says, "Oh, where do these four states meet?" "Well, how big is Cortez?" He says, "Oh, it's as big as Denver." Well, when we got here, we got here at night, and we come through Main Street, three signals. We go down the Dolores Highway, we get to our in-laws' house. I asked my mother-in-law, I said, "Where's Cortez?" She said, "Well, you had to go through it when you came in." I said, "What the hell there was was this little thing with three signals." And she said, "That's Cortez." I looked at my husband, and I thought, "Oh, my God, what did I get myself into?" Well, the next day, when it was daylight, Empire was a dirt road. Three signals, no McDonald's, no mall, no nothing. So here I am, a junior in high school. I graduated from the junior deal. So I thought, "You know what? I need to go back to school." So I did, and I did my senior year here. My son was born here, my grandkids were born here, and I have a great-grandson. All of us Rodds have graduated here in Cortez. This is one of the most beautiful, most wonderful, and most caring community there is. In California, you wouldn't see this. If there's a fire, they all get together and help the person. You don't have that in big cities. The things that you are trying to do to these people are running people out of Cortez. There are 14 empty buildings on Main Street. Why? Why are they empty? Because they're not going to be able to afford to live here. When young couples here build a home, they want to build their dream home, not the city council's dream home. We need to stop this. Please stop this. Thank you.
Kelly Belt, Fairway Drive, Cortez. Thank you for having us. Thank you for listening to everybody tonight. I hope that you heed everything that we've said tonight. This is a community, and I believe that what they have said here is strong tonight. This is a strong community, and I just, I hope we keep it that way. I brought a copy of the county land use code. This is 80 pages, okay? The county commissioner's tasked the planning members to constantly look for ways to revise and get rid of regulations, and I think we're going in the wrong direction here, so thank you.
Good evening. My name's Frank Green. I live at 27183 County Road H. I'm a fifth-generation Montezuma County resident. And I live here because a lot of the reasons you people do, the reason I haven't left, and the reason that we've heard tonight of several people that have moved to this community is because we've always been kind of a Mayberry community. We're down home. We're friends. We're local. We help each other and try. I don't think that we want this, for a better word, better phrase, a California mindset here. We know what we like. We know what we have. We want to keep it this way. So I urge you, please don't vote on this. Let's keep this a Mayberry-type community. Thank you.
I'm Sharona Jacobs, and I live on Akoma Street. My family helped settle this entire area from Mankas Valley, Disappointment Valley. They have homesteads here in Cortez before Cortez was anything. This town matters to me. I managed to escape, because as a teenager, I couldn't wait to get out of here. I made it all the way to Cascade, halfway between Durango and Silverton, and I turned around, and I tuck-tell, and I came back home, because Cortez is beautiful. Cortez is so much better than any area around us. We are a community. This is the biggest turnout I have ever seen Cortez show up for. And you know why? Because most of the time, we like to live and let live. We keep our mouths shut until people make us angry. The stuff you guys are trying to push through has obviously united us in a way that we haven't been united in a long time. If this gets passed, all it's going to do is turn Cortez into a bigger ghost town than it's already starting to be. 14 places on Main Street being empty? How many homes are rotting away? Because it's already hard to live here. It's an impoverished area. You guys have heard all of this multiple times tonight. Your jobs are because of us, so listen to us.
I live on, over Lyndon Street with my sister. And I've never really been a big one to come to these type of meetings or talk in front of people or anything the such like that, but a good friend of mine told me to come and support his wife, because her losing that would probably cost them everything. And she's the one that was talking about the daycare business in her home. One of the other reasons I came is I got to talk to my grandpa recently, who has not been around here long. He's only been here maybe 20 years, a little bit longer than I've been alive. He came from New York, and he was there when it was nothing but fields and fields of vineyards, nothing but grapes. He's always got jokes. He's always got something funny to say. He's always got quick wit, good humor, something to laugh about. And when I told him kind of what was going on, he decided to go and read this, and I've never seen him that sad, because he told me he hopes to never see Cortez turn into what New York is now. I don't know much about this stuff. I don't know how it works. I don't know how it's all put together, but if someone of his age, who's about to be 100, can look at this place and see the future, and maybe think it can turn to something where a bill like this or a code like this will drive the small community away, drive the family-owned businesses away, and bring in more corporations, turn into something that is government-run, government housing the such, it's not something I would want to support. I don't really like standing up here and talking in front of people, but I think this is a cause I'm willing to support and say that we should definitely vote no on this. Thank you.
I live at 1311 Melrose. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, so it's all impromptu here. Back in 1970, I moved a family out here from Chicago. I looked the area over, hey, this is a great place to be. Hey, I liked the mountains, and I could see 80 miles in different directions. I originally come from a small farming community out in North West Iowa, Emmett County, and is about 10 miles south of Minnesota, south of Iowa Lake. Anyway, this community, you know, looks like a place I'd like to settle down permanently. Anyway, so I left Chicago. I was licensed to handle radioactive materials back in Chicago with the...anyway, I won't go there. But anyway, anyway, I moved out here in '72. I followed an investment, went sour. I acquired my property here. I spent, I've been out here 48 years. Anyway, long and short of it, the ninth of this month, I was invited to this meeting over there in, and I found out that there was some hidden agenda in this land use bill that I'll probably lose my home. And it's been bothering me. I can't hardly eat, haven't hardly been able to sleep the last couple weeks. And anyway, with $2,650 a day fine, I won't be able to, I wouldn't be able to afford to...that's my income, my fixed income with socioeconomic administration is about half that per month, and I'll lose everything. And I'm too old. I'll be, I'm a year and a half from 80, and I can't start over, and I was going to make this my home. So I don't know. That's all. I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Mike Sheedy, and I live on... interaction here. If you can hear me, would you raise your hand? Everybody? Can you hear me? I don't see every hand going up.
I didn't get your name. Can you repeat it?
Okay. All right. I think you've had a pretty good representation of Cortez here tonight. And I'm hoping that you were listening. Listen to the heartbeat of this community. I love living here. I live in the county. But the way the code reads, I may not be in the county, according to what I understand there. So I'm just about three miles out. And I love being a country guy. If you think you had a pretty good voice of this community and representation of this community tonight, would you raise your hand? One, two, three? Anybody else listening? Did you listen to what people were saying tonight? I think you had a pretty good representation, representation of the heartbeat of this community. And will know by the way you vote if you listened to us or not. Because I listened here, I heard maybe three percent that were for this. And you can go back to the records here and you can figure out the statistics of how many people are against this. And I urge you to vote no and listen to your community.
Sheldon Randall, two-two-six-six-eight, Road S. Lots been said tonight, and I agree with a lot of it. But I can guarantee you one thing. If this goes through, I will not be able to expand like I had planned to. Just the money in itself, the first go-around, I couldn't build as big as I wanted to because I'm just starting out. So my plan was to wait a few years, grow my business, be able to expand. I'm in the industrial park. With the new code, the numbers are astronomical for me. And it's not feasible to grow my business. Anyway, that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Heather McDonald. I live at two-two-one-zero-zero, Highway four-ninety-one, in Yellow Jacket. I'm sure that you're wondering why I'm here. Nope, this is fine. I'm pretty loud. I think everybody can hear me. I'm here tonight because I know a lot of the people in this community. I'm here tonight because even though I was not born in Cortez, I've lived here since I was eight. I've had my own struggles in this county, and I've risen above them. And I'm here to tell you that there's nobody in this county who can afford what you guys are proposing. We all struggle day-to-day, paycheck to paycheck. You all struggle. Can you live by the proposed code that you are trying to enforce? I'm standing here tonight to ask you to vote no, for the good of our community and the community businesses around town. Thank you.
My name's Jordan Owens. I own a small business. I say we vote no on this.
Sir, sir, can you state your address so she can record?
Three-twenty-five South Broadway.
Can you say your name again, too? I'm sorry.
Jordan Owens.
Thank you.
Okay. My biggest fear is, as a small business owner, we love to support our community, the four-H, things like that. By you guys passing this, we will not be able to support our community, baseball teams, anything in our community. So if you guys pass this, not only will you lose small business support for your community, you'll lose employment and everything else. So I say no. Thanks.
Hello, council. My name's Jerry Ramirez. I live on my in-law's property, down at five-eight-six-one, County Road twenty-five. And it's concerning how you guys have proposed to extend the three-mile expansion thing that you guys talk about, because it would affect their property as well. And right now, as I know you guys are aware, a lot of families are, whether they're single-income family or dual-income families, a lot of them are barely surviving in this community. And with all these possible high twenty-five-hundred, or, sorry, twenty-five-hundred-and-fifty, what is it? Yeah, penalties for it. It'd be very hard for some people to even afford to even keep their homes or their vehicles if they haven't paid off or land taxes and all that, you know? And that concerns me because I have, like I said, a family. But also, I've lived in this area for more than twenty-five years. Moved out here, my parents moved us out here when I was about three-and-a-half years old. And I've seen it grow, which has been, it's nice to see something grow. But to focus so much on the growth that we start killing off and destroying our community is not the way to go about doing it. We should encourage growth, but as I know you guys are aware, around the country, everything's starting to go towards conformity, trying to conform into one body, trying to be the same as everything else. There's nothing wrong with being different. And this community is different. We're not, we're not Durango. We're not Denver. We're Cortez. And a lot of us, me included, are prideful of being Cortez. And that's something we should all keep, keep in mind when we try and move towards the future. Let's progress. Let's grow. But ask Cortez. Let's keep our identity. And I guess that's all I got to say. And I strongly encourage to vote for no for this.
Anybody else?
Hello. My name is Stacy Morris. I live at fifty-six-thirty-seven, Highway one-sixty, Cortez. Most of what I wanted to talk about tonight has also been spoken about. But I think it's important to reiterate the fact that there, there are families in this community who have left other communities because of regulations such as are being proposed. My family, we moved down here from, I grew up in Boulder, Colorado, and we had no interest in raising our children in a community that was overly regulated. We didn't want cookie-cutter houses and a complete lack of character. We wanted to be able to come to a community that really showed the people of the community. There are several portions of the proposed land use code that are incredibly restrictive, all the way down to only being able to sell Colorado-grown produce at farm stands in certain zones. We're the Four Corners area. We embrace so many different cultures and nationalities. We have more neighbors in New Mexico, Arizona, Utah than we have in Colorado. We don't even get Colorado news down here. And so for us to eliminate the ability of people who have been in our community for as long as they have, from selling their farm goods or participating in things that they've, it's what makes Cortez Cortez. And that's, that's why we're here. I think we're all well aware of the level of poverty and economic inequalities of Monizuma County and Cortez as compared to the rest of our state. To say that there is any reasonable notion that anybody in this community is going to be able to afford to update their properties and to live within this proposed land use code is ludicrous. I was the HR manager at Western Excelsior in Mankas, and I know how many of my employees or my former employees lived over here in Cortez. I know what those people make. I know what they struggle with their families. And there's no way that they will be able to afford to live here. There's no way that they'll be able to afford to own property. This land use code is really, really restrictive and will make sure that the well-to-do are able to afford to live here. But what are you going to do with the people who make Cortez Cortez? I think that's really the most of it. Thank you.
My name's Daniel Hope. I have a business here in Cortez, Colorado, Daniel's Concrete and Excavation. I have an industrial lot at the industrial park. And I moved here in nineteen ninety-three, and there's a few traffic lights and that. But I struggled here, and I loved the place. I moved from Tucson, Arizona, and I enjoyed the freedom of this place. And I clawed and persevered and built a business. And I see that in every person here that has struggled to get their businesses going, own property. I've bid jobs for people around here. They said, "No, a little too high, Danny. Can't take, I can't do it. I just can't do the project." Well, what is this going to do on something like that? Why are we here? How could anybody open up that saying, "You're going to get a twenty-six-hundred-dollar fine a day?" And we're here, even entertaining this. This is absurd. These are people that are struggling, a community that's struggling. And I just don't understand a council that could just, and a mayor that could sit here and, and look at that and have not have common sense for the people that are here. It is not about homes. This is Cortez. We are looking at Cortez here. It's not businesses. These are people that own these businesses. If there's no people there, there's no business. There's no residents. This is our, this is our city. And we need to stand up for this, and please vote no.
Hello. I'm Brian Oaks. I have a small business on seven-oh-eight South Broadway. And I was just curious, it came to my mind, how many of the, and I'd like a show of hands, how many of the city council members have owned a business or own a business right now? I was just curious about that. And I hope you vote no on this code. Thank you.
Sorry, guys. I'm losing my voice, so don't make fun of me. I'm Bonnie Layton, eight-sixteen Arbor. I happen to be the president of the Four Corner Board of Realtors. But right now, I'm speaking to you as a community member, and as I've sat and listened to all of these people talk, you have a decision before you to either splinter this city in two with the people that are angry and the people that have power, or you have the chance to step back and say, "Let's take another look at this, and let's include the community." And the community then has a responsibility to say, "Yes, we will be on your committees. Yes, we will give you input." But just please give the people a chance and vote no on this. Yes, we've spent five years on this and much money on it, but it's better to start over again and do it right with the support of the people than to pass it and have people that are angry for a long time. But thank you for listening to us.
My name is Derek Morris, fifty-six-thirty-seven, Highway one-sixty-four-ninety-one, Cortez. I hear a lot of people talking about it. I know a lot of small business owners personally. And there's ripple effects from this. Our kids play Little League. They play in the softball league. They play in these rec leagues that are sponsored by these business owners. And with you guys imposing this land use code and all the fines and all this extra things that they have to now do, it's going to take away from those opportunities that these businesses pay for and sponsor so our youth have opportunities. So I strongly suggest you guys vote no. And think about not just the citizens now, but future and our youth. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gail Alexander. I own a business here down on Broadway, four-ninety-one North Broadway. And several of you know me very, very well, including the mayor. Because I used to work for Cortez Retail Enhancement. And listening to all these wonderful people and seeing all these wonderful people of our community come in and talk about our businesses and the fact that we've lost so many businesses, I have one question for all of you. If you vote yes for this and it passes, how can you look at yourself in the mirror? Because you are making a lot of businesses go away. Can you live with that? I couldn't if I were you. A lot of you live, have lived here the majority of your lives. My family came here in nineteen thirteen, so my family's been over here, been here for over a hundred years. I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed of you all if you vote for this. We're supposed to be proud of the people that represent us. You're not going to, you're not going to get a lot of people being proud of you. How can you sit there when you're going to hurt this community the way this land use is going to hurt this committee, community? You just remember that. So if you go ahead and you vote for it and it passes, when you see all of us on uptown, you better be able to look us in the eye and not be ashamed of what you did. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Emiko South. I live at seven-one-two-seven, Road twenty-five-point-four, Cortez. Even though I don't live in the city, we work here, we shop here, we, we raised our kids here. But the, and a lot of what people have said before, so I won't go into that. But the one thing I did want to bring up was, Mayor Sheik, you said in your article in January twenty-seventh that you talked about the cost of these requirements as a return on your investment. Where in the Constitution does it say that the government should look out for my investment? I thought that was my business. It's not the government's business to look out for all these businesses' investments. I respectfully ask you to vote no on this. Let the businesses do their job, and you do your job, which is health and safety. Thank you.
Mr. Backstrom, we need to let everybody else have a first time before anybody gets a second time.
Okay. I thought we had already done that.
Well, I, are you, sorry, are you wanting to speak? Yeah, you've got somebody, at least one person ahead of you. Yeah, you've got somebody, at least one person ahead of you.
My name's Colton Black. I live at 29078, Road M. I wasn't going to speak on this. I'm relatively new to the area. I did recently relocate to here, though, from the Durango area and was very intimately involved in their land use planning process over there for the county. I did want to point out, though, this is not the same fight. That, though, there are a lot of similarities. Over there, a lot of their fight had to do with zoning, which is already in place here in Montezuma County and in the city of Cortez. And so that part of the fight is kind of irrelevant, and that was really the main sticking point to things there. However, a big part of that was a lack of community involvement, which I think is very much so the case with what has happened here. That seems to be a general theme going across the board, is that the community hasn't been properly involved in the process as it's gone forward. And I think for that fact alone is why, at this point, the land use code that is proposed should get voted down, and there should be a step back and a period of time to reengage the community on that front. With that being said, I don't believe that what has been proposed is a complete failure. I've been through the code and compared it to the existing code, and in a lot of ways, there are some improvements. And I think that one of the big things that needs to be addressed that I haven't heard anybody discuss is, I think that there's been a lot of fear mongering and stuff that has been done to, you know, in-site reaction. And I don't believe that that is fair to those that put time into the code, and I don't believe that's fair to the general public. Some of the stuff in regards to fees and fines and all those things there, there is an entire section in the proposed code that deals with non-conforming uses, many of which would resolve most of the concerns that have been brought up by individuals that I've spoke with in the community and heard here tonight. When you address things in a way so that you're dealing with 1% of the scenarios that can arise and then try to apply that broadly, I believe that's disingenuous. I think that, for the most part, that section, I believe it's Section 10 of the new proposed code on non-conforming uses, would cover roughly 99% of the issues that would come up that might pertain to most residential issues or businesses that don't conform to stuff. And unless they made significant improvements or changes in the use to their property, they wouldn't be subjected to those fines and other portions of those things. So I don't believe that that has been communicated well, and that may, in a lot of parts, be a failure on part of the city and the staff there, not doing a good job in educating and answering those questions. But I just wanted to point that out, that there is a lot of stuff that is there, and I don't think it's helpful to the process when we're pointing out stuff that really doesn't, isn't really true in 100% of the way, and you're creating scenarios that are a little bit in the land of make-believe. I also want to just touch a little bit on the economic development piece. I'm a lender by career. I've also spent time working for a pretty large development firm that worked in the low-income housing tax credit development realm, which deals with Section 42 housing tax credits. And I can tell you, when you have an investor or a lender or stuff that wants to invest millions of dollars in a project, a good, clean code is a good way to get them to do that investment. So I think that we need to get there. I don't think that the process has been right, and I think that we can get there if the city staff will and the city council will give us that time as a community to come to that type of a code. Thanks.
My name is Larry Doncicula. I'm here as a Montezuma County Commissioner, not as a private citizen. I'm here as a Montezuma County Commissioner. My address is 11721. I was elected to be the voice of the people. Simplicity is genius. I urge you to vote no.
I'd just like to add, my name is Marcy Raichanoff, 24851, Road F-75, Cortez. My husband and I own a business in Cortez. I just want to add my name to the please-don't-vote, vote no. This scares us, the fact that this could pass and the fact that it'll hurt our business growth is a little bit scary, so please vote no.
I live in Pleasant View, but I've worked at a business here in Cortez for the past nine years. What bothers me most about this code is that these codes are supposed to help people. I see lots of solutions in this code to problems that don't exist here in this community. I strongly urge that you vote no.
Going once?
Saved by the bell. Because I've, my name is Mitzi Wallace. I live at 26039 County Road N, Cortez. I, my family have been ranchers for generations. I taught in Dolores at the high school for 26 years, social studies, among a few other things in a small school. And I've made about, I don't know, pages of notes. And so I guess I'm going to hold on to that history, and I'm going to say to you that history, you can learn a lot from history. And we have had people here tonight tell us the history of this company that wrote the code in Flagstaff. That gentleman, he used the word refugee. Flagstaff, we see that as a university town, a successful place. He's a businessman, a refugee from that. I thought that was powerful, that he's telling you the history. And then the lady that moved here from Delta with the Tozier family, that was history. Delta, you heard that. And I used to tell my kids in my world history class that countries, cities, families rise and fall on leadership. And all you have to do is go back in history and look at that over and over and over again. What if we didn't have George Washington? What if we had a Stalin-like guy? It's all about leadership. There was Chamberlain, pre-World War II, and then there was Churchill. And everybody knows Churchill quotes. That guy was a leader. And so I implore you, everybody who spoke here tonight, I'm just going to stay on the history thing, because, you know, Mel Gibson, the Patriot movie is a good one. So everybody here is patriots because they had enough nerve to come here tonight and stand and talk and face you and tell you that we love this town. So be a patriot to this town and our country, and listen to the history lessons that you have heard tonight, and vote no. It's just the only common sense thing to do. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak before I take my second term? Before I get back to my questions that I have for you about the way this process was handled, I do want to call to your attention, because I'm not certain that you can see this from your point of view, but the meeting room across the hall and the meeting room over here, they're nearly full as well. And there is also about a minute delay between what you're doing here and what they hear in there, so please take that into consideration. So I do have a few more questions for you. The final draft of the proposed land use code that we look at tonight was published in October of 2018, but was done so on a page buried on the city of Cortez website that you would have to know about to go ahead and find. Since that date, there were only three public meetings for public input on this document, and those were held in a nine-day period: February 11th of 2019, February 13th of 2019, and February 20th of 2019. These meetings were only published about in the journal once, and that was on February 8th of 2019 on Page 7C. I don't think many people saw that. Doesn't sound like the massive public outreach that you promised, DOLA, when you applied for the grant for $100,000 for the project. City staff reported that these meetings were poorly attended. Why not more public outreach after that? Where and when was the virtual town hall that the city of Cortez was supposed to host in coordination with Kendi Keys Collaborative? This project was supposed to have been completed in 18 to 24 months. Why has it taken us nearly six years? It doesn't seem like this time was taken to create a perfect document that city staff and city council can stand behind, knowing that it is for the good of our community. Why was there a gap of over two years during this six-year time period where there was absolutely no meetings or no public discussions regarding the proposed land use code? I remind you that there was no meetings from April 26th of 2016 until the proposed land use code was published on the city of Cortez's website on the 29th of October in From my research of information that the city has publicized, Kendi Keys Collaborative has only been paid a total of $64,725.05. Why was the total amount not the $186,915.00 paid? Where is the missing $120,000, and what happened to that relationship? We have been told that we are misinformed, but yet we have yet to be corrected or educated by city staff or by city council members that claim this. We've read the code, have you? I ask again, where is the transparency to the public? Please remember, as you sit up there and deliberate this vote, the government is to work for the will of the people, not city staff, and certainly not for yourselves. Thank you.
I'm Richard Cox, 701 Hartman Road. I want to thank the city council for all they've done, all they're trying to do for us, but I want you to know, I've kind of kept track. There's been a little over 60 people spoke out against this, and two people spoke for it. So you might remember that as you vote. Thank you.
Where I left off, well, first I want to say, I want to thank my community, my very diverse community, for stepping out and voicing their opinions tonight. My last question I ask, I ask why you did not start with your own community right here with your research. Had you have done this first, I don't believe we would be here tonight. Why are you listening to researchers that have not analyzed our community? Because if they had, they would have found out that we are a very diverse community, and we do not want to be a cookie cutter community. This code is riddled with inconsistencies, contradictory statements, and grammatical errors. This code as written jeopardizes our economic growth, will oppress our real estate market, affordable housing, and our property rights. This code needs to be rejected, and then we need to take our existing code and have some factual data-driven analysis done and revise the old code. I would urge you all to vote no on this proposed land use code. Okay, I'd kind of like to finish up here real quick with the article in the Free Press that mentioned Walmart. Would you rather have Durango or Cortez? Durango's Walmart was built in 1998 before the land use code was updated to the comp plan. The citizens didn't want a big box store, and it was voted down. The Waltons moved to Durango, the Waltons established a personal connection, and they got to know the people as promised, a beautiful store to match the surrounding aesthetics created by God. Act and react is different when you know the people, not by no out-of-state environmental extremist. As most of you know, I am/was from La Plata County. The city of Durango was updated, their code, to the comp plan. We have talked to some developers, saying that if they knew what they were getting into with all the open-ended regulations, they would have never started the project, as it destroyed their budget. It has unfolded, and the city is making it up as they go along. In the city websites is what needs to be updated. They are confusing with very little information with no updates. Part of the stipulation by the grant is the website would enable convenient public interaction at any time and from any place through the unique and the easy-to-use websites interface for both the computers and mobile devices. There is duplicate site navigation, which generates frustration and confusion for the citizens. Both sites should have equal, clearly defined access, updates, meetings, minutes for the community, and scheduled events. I pray that council has listened and has understood the elected oath of office and role of protecting the individual property rights and liberty of all residents while ensuring their health, safety, and improving economic opportunities. Please vote no. Please leave this for the new city council. Okay, now Charles Jeter sent out an analysis on January 13th, I mean 14th. He has wrote another analysis on January 27th, and he is here on the phone.
Hi, everybody. I'm the gun show, or excuse me, the gun club member, 1401 County Road 25. I've been watching this all night, escaped a class in public administration. I'm so amazed at the turnout, and I'm really amazed at what I think should be unanimous vote. I honestly, really think that the council should come back and vote no on this unanimously. To look at the people who are talking about this right now and to look at the people who are sitting up on the podium, I'm wondering if there's a severe disconnect here. This is not what people want. These people earn tax dollars for your community. Two plus two equals four. People want to be left the hell alone, and they've made that super clear right now. And I think that's important. I don't want to go over on time for anybody, but I do want to say that this is something going forward that can be solved. But I've lost a lot of faith in how this process has been dealt with. I'm shocked to find out about the $120,000 that's missing. I'm shocked to find out that these things are things that really need to be taken care of. So please vote no, and look forward to solving this problem, and look forward to actually creating a process driven down from city council to planning, because frankly, Planner Hughes, I'm disappointed. That's all I have to say right now. Vote no, and look to a better process in the future.
I'm Dave Waters, 116415, County Road 21.4. We own businesses and property in Cortez. I've abandoned the rest of my speech because I want to modify it just a little bit and try and help us get out of here a little bit quicker. When you vote this down tonight, I would appreciate it if you decide to pick it back up and work on it again, that you would look at the job that your staff has done on this and the lack of effort put into it. On October 8th, when we left your meeting and you so graciously tabled this for us to get more input, you told me, "Go out and round them up and corral them." Here they are, please listen to them. Also, I would like to point out, you give us three months to do this during Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years. We also took a vacation during this period of time. It's not that hard to get the word out. So I would appreciate it if you would give your planning staff better directions and make sure that they're following through on what they said they were going to do. make sure that they're following through on what they said they were going to do, and talk to your P&amp;Z about actually looking and reading what they're making decisions on. With that being said, I would like to thank the Republican Women's Club for helping us pull this off, and most importantly, thank all of you people for coming and supporting this and helping get it shut down. And it's wonderful to see all the young people that are here tonight. Thank you very much for listening.
I haven't had a thing. All right? But council members, I don't like these odds. You know, you look out here at these people, 50 years ago I'd enjoyed it, but I made it four. And I don't know. I read the body language on you guys. You must know something I don't. I've been in a hell of a lot of fights. Ask the sheriff. Ask Roy Lang. I'm an old timer here. I was born on the front porch of a house out here at Areola. My mom said she went to bed, got up, and there I was. I had nothing to do with it. Nothing. But you look at these people, gals and guys, better make a judgment, because you get them around, it's like buckshot. And ask porters how that feels. I know I can thank Charlene for setting me wise to a little of it, and then, yeah, hold your hand up, I can't think of it. She turned me on to some of it, too. But I'm not at the age, I want to be a copycat. I like things my way. And it sounds like you people do, too. And I admire that. I'm a Korean veteran. It was cold there, but not as cold as this room is right now. I would be leery, very, very leery. And that's all I have to say. But council members, I hope you're listening. I think it'd be a very wise and smart thing to do.
I'm Rick Keck, 23113 County Road G. I've lived in Cortez a lot of times, lived in the county a couple of times. I've been here for 63 years. I took a good look at the code, guys, and man, I think there's 60, 65% of that that hurts us. Businesses, individuals, just about everybody. And I know that when you guys put this thing together, you had staff working on it, and you got loyalties, and you feel like you should support them. And then, when it's all together, it just, to me, it won't work, not here. There might be some places it worked. I don't really know of any place it would work, the way it's written. I think we all have to realize, sometimes we make a mistake. Let's work together and get something that works for all of us. That's it.
I just told my friends back there, I should sit down and shut up, but I'm not going to. The gentleman in the cowboy hat spoke words of wisdom. I've been sitting back there watching y'all. We are talking to you. We are trying to communicate to you our concerns, our thoughts, our feelings, and they are legitimate. And when one man asked you, how many of you were listening? Three of you raised your hands. Three. Are you listening to us? Or are you so concerned about your position on the land use codes that you don't really give a hoot about what all of these people out here have said tonight? I'm sorry, but it's pretty blatant. But like he said, it's pretty cold.
I would like to respond to that. Actually, probably it's best to not at this point, but I think you're making an assumption that's really not fair. I think that all six of us up here are listening to what you've had to say.
I hope so.
I have written down three pages, written down three pages of notes recording what individual people have said regarding the code and where they stand. As I look down the table, my other council members are doing the same thing.
I watched one fall asleep.
Well, I don't know who that would have been, but...
Whatever.
I think you, I think you need to...
What, I need to shut up?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
I would hope not.
I am glad to see the number of people at this meeting. We go many, many council meetings where there are more council members than there are citizens in the audience. And so seeing this kind of community turnout is actually very rewarding. But don't make assumptions based on information that you don't know. You don't know me.
No, I don't. You don't know me either.
I have paid attention to what every single person has said tonight.
You don't know any of us, or not a lot of us.
No, I don't, but I have respectfully listened to what you've had to say, and I am, and I am taking it under consideration, so.
Okay.
Well, she can have her time again.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It kind of all goes together with what's going on here, is how I see it.
Hey, I'm Jedekiah Coy, and I live at 708 Hartman Road in Cortez. And I'm doing my best to be non-biased, but there was some chatter, and I hope I don't shoot myself in the foot here, but there was some chatter before the meeting tonight that I overheard, and I will not point fingers. And I would just let you know that I am disappointed at some of the comments that you would want to, in a sense, shatter the ability of people to come together peaceably and voice their opinions. I just want you guys to think about that, because it really broke my heart, because this community is coming together and doing the best that they can to peaceably talk about some issues with you guys. Thank you.
Jenny Todechini, I live on Kaylee Circle. Mayor Sheik, you were my librarian. You hushed us in the library, but now is not the time to hush us or hush the lady that you just cut off. So do not hush us. This is not your library. This is your city, and you need to listen.
I live on 6452 Road 24.2. I sat there and listened, and I thought of all kinds of things to say. Most of them has already been said. But I've had one question. This question came up when Obama was voted president and he passed Obamacare, and I know we're not here about political, that kind of political stuff, but he passed that Obamacare and it said, "You'll be penalized if you can't afford health insurance." And I thought, that's crazy. If I could afford health insurance, then I wouldn't have to be penalized for not having it. Fortunately, I have a husband that works hard and he makes good money, and we have health insurance, $2,000 a month. But I don't know, listening to all this has really got me, my blood boiling, and that's my question to the council, is if people could afford your upgrades and afford, I haven't read this bill, I know very little about it, but if people could, I live in a house I paid $43,000 for 23 years ago. I would love to live in a $300,000 home that has this beautiful siding and a beautiful yard. My husband has to leave this city, leave this county to work, to make a living, to support him and his family. He wasn't able to participate in his children growing up because he had to leave this county to make a living. And so now, we are coming and listening to this land code bill, or whatever you want to call it, and they're telling us, okay, you're going to be fined $2,600 if you can't do. Don't you think if I could afford these upgrades, I'd do them? Yet I'm going to get penalized $2,600 a day because I can't do these? Tell me how this makes sense. I didn't understand it when Obama did it with Obamacare, and I don't understand it with you guys and what you're trying to do either. Just, I need somebody to explain to me in whose mind this makes sense, because I don't know about you people, does this make sense to you guys? Do you guys understand it? Because I don't. And I need it explained to me. I would love to have $2,600. My house needs painted. I would love to have $2,600 to add a, or $20,000 to add a room onto my house, because I'd like a bigger bedroom or more room for when my kids and my grandkids come to visit so we could, so we could have more room for them to participate. When my daughter comes home from Texas, I would love to be able to fit her kids in a bedroom while they're staying with me. You know, if I had $2,600, there was so much more I could do, yet you guys want to penalize me because I don't have the money to do whatever your upgrades are. Like you said, I haven't even read the bill. I don't understand, that's my fault. I didn't read it to understand it. But just listening to what everybody else says, I need somebody to explain this to me. I don't live in this city, but I assume I'm fitting into that three-mile radius thing. And there again, I don't understand what that's all about, because I didn't read the bill. But when somebody can explain this to me, I would love to listen to you, and I would love to have a better, more informed opinion of what my son and daughter-in-law live here. You know, my daughter-in-law is trying to find a house to rent. You know what rent goes for? And this is a cheap, nothing house. $900 a month to rent. My son has a disability that keeps him from working a big part of the year. So how are they supposed to afford the rent of $900 a month? They live in my rental, and I can't even, they can't even afford to pay me rent, yet you want young people to come here and start living and start making a way to prosper and thrive in Cortez and make this a productive city? A lot of questions, guys, I'd like some answers to.
Emily Cole, 701 Canyon Drive. I just wanted to say a couple things. One, I've talked to a whole bunch of people who are outside of Cortez city limits, outside of the zone of influence, or whatever you guys are calling it, and all of them say, "I don't want to go shop in Durango. I don't want to give Durango my business. I'm not going to go eat in Durango. I'm not going to buy anything in Durango." And if we pass this, they've said they're not coming here either. They'd rather drive to Farmington than come shop here and put their business into our town because we've turned into Durango. And my other point, when we, before this started, Mayor Sheik, you addressed us all and said, "Please be respectful. Please don't put us down. It gains us nothing." I've been sitting here, listening to all these people, watching your body language. There are people that walk up here, you may have heard them 60 billion times the last few months, but rolling your eyes at them is disrespectful and putting them down. Thank you.
I'm young, I know. And you know what that means? That you're going to be affecting my future with this new code that's coming in. It's not just the seniors, it's not just the disabled, it's not just the business owners, it's not just everybody else that's in here. It's young people like me, just getting out of high school, getting ready to be on their feet, and then if this bill passes, I'm not going to have a very good start, because I struggle with a lot of things now. There's plenty enough to struggle with. And then, now I'm going to have to learn a whole new building code, I'm going to have to learn how to make a lot more money than I know how to make. And a lot of that, I don't even, it's just, woo, over my head. And it's going to be affecting my future majorly, it's going to be affecting all of the youth. People that are going to be living here in the future. It's kind of absurd to make it to where that if our houses or whatever we buy into or something, we can't, we already are going to be having violations that are beginning, it's just going to be costing loads and loads of money that we don't have. We're trying to have our start in life. And I just don't think that it would be possible for any of the youth to make it. We'd all have to leave, and it's hard enough as is without our families being in horrible disarray with all of the money and finances that's going to be just taken away for no good reason. I didn't grow up all that wealthy. I grew up better than some, I grew up worse than others, whatever. But I do know that if this code comes in, and my father and my mother are going to be penalized, all of their pay for the work and jobs that they do, and everything like that, I won't have any family to rely on after, whenever, whenever I get out of my house, if I get out of my house, that is. And that doesn't look like it's going to be very likely with this new code that's coming in. And it just seems absurd. I feel just to vote no. It's not good for the youth, it's not good for any homeowner, it's not good for any business owner, it's not good for any of the seniors that are already struggling to make it day-to-day, paycheck to paycheck.
My name is Marion Rod, 11773 Highway 145. I know some of you that are on the city council. One of them that's on the city council lives next door to my uncle, he was 92 years old. This person used to shovel the snow off my uncle's driveway. That's a good community person. There's another one on the city council that has been involved in a lot of good things in this town. That's another good person. There's two on the city council that was born and raised in Cortez. I know they care for the city of Cortez. We're not saying you're bad people. What we're trying to say is, you're making a bad decision for Cortez. We need your help, and this is not the kind of help we want. We know you're good people, we know you care, but you have to say no because you're hurting your community. Thank you.
My name is Timothy Garland. I live at 715 North Market. My grandfather owns a business here and I help him run it. And the other day, the mayor was open for concerns here at the, well, here anyways. And when I left there, I felt like I didn't have a voice at all. And, when I left there, I felt like I didn't have a voice at all. She was very condescending and did not write down any of our concerns at all. Instead, she wrote down one of her own concerns that we brought to her attention and that was the land use code price, how much it cost. And I found that disgusting. I found it very disgusting. And she's shaking her head at me right now. That says a lot about what's going on here tonight. I'm disappointed. That's all I got. Thanks.
I'm Jody Henley, 255 West Fourth Street. Charles Jeter is on the phone and he's going to express this for me. Charles? Charles?
Yeah?
Oh, you've got three minutes and 30 seconds.
Right now?
You've got three minutes and 30 seconds. Talk.
Oh, right now? Are we, are we on? Okay, great. Okay, fantastic. I guess I got a delay on this. Okay, so, the big issue I want to say here is that we're looking at a failure, this is a revocation of consent. That's why it's painful, Mayor Sheik. And I see that you're frustrated and I've been watching this all night. And I read your paper, your article, you didn't, you didn't talk about any of the points I brought up. You just kept saying about how people have spent so much time on this. And you kept making these appeals to how difficult it was and how much the staff worked on it. Here's the fact. People are revoking this, this law you want to make in. And you keep talking about it, I'm frustrated right now, so I'm not speaking exactly the same way. But I need you to understand this. When you put code in, it's law that day. And nobody's ever refuted that. I put that in like two weeks ago and I talked about it. And, and your article in the journal didn't speak towards that. That's kind of disingenuous when you don't actually bring up the actual truth of what happens. This code cannot go through because it's lousy. It brings in the possibility of corruption. And that pisses these people off because they don't like it. They don't want to have to deal with somebody else's interpretation of what they know can make a living for them. I don't think you understand this. I've got friends of mine, and this really upsets me because one of the guys on the planning committee talks a lot of smack about veterans. Listen, I got dead friends of mine and I think about this every, every day. I got people who I went to school with in that picture who served, like Davy Martinez and Johnny Garcia. Those two kids and I, we all served. Okay? Davy's sister died up in Mesa Verde. All right? Johnny Garcia did his 20, got out all his fingers and toes and I did my six and a half years. We didn't do that stuff overseas so you could sit here and play your silly games. Now I'm pissed and I was trying really hard not to do this. But god dang it, people want to be left the hell alone. You cannot just sit there and think you're not going to have anything because you sneaked this by for two years. Your name is on that dollar grant. There's money missing. Can you not fill in the blanks? Are you that imperceptible? I'm really upset because these are people, I have known these people in this community for 40 years of my life. And you're crapping all over it with your snide looks. And you're crapping all over it when you interrupt people. It's not your turn to talk. Okay? This is what happens when people decide you failed the public trust. And you have failed miserably. And your attorney has failed. And Tracy, you have failed as a planner. I am sad to say these things. I'm trying to get in this industry. I initially thought I was going to work for you people, for free. I've put 80 hours of my time into this and all I've found is layers of crap and layers of crap. Every time I look at this, I find more corruption potential. It's ridiculous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Justin Carson, living over on Linden again. You know, really, if we just take it down to the boiling points of this, if you take all the facts and set them aside, I don't know really nothing about this bill. Everything I've learned today about how the bill's been set up here, how it's been processed, how things have been put forth, that in of itself should mean this bill should be dropped. Even if we bring back a lot of these principles in a later bill, I could understand that. What gets me is the process of how it came through, of how underhanded a lot of it seems, of how ambiguous a lot of the wording seems to come across to a good majority of people. What level of shadiness is acceptable? None. On the same note, just because you made a mistake and you spent a lot of time making a lot of money, doesn't mean you should hold on to it. Thank you.
Charlene O'Dell. I've been sitting here, listening to all these people. And nobody's ever asked you guys, "Is this what you want for the future of your family, your friends, your loved ones? If you vote yes, is this the consequences that you want them to face? Are you going to be able in five, 10, 20 years, look at them and say, 'Gee, I made a mistake. Now we have to jump through all these hoops.' Is this what you, each one of you over there that are thinking yes, want for your family, your loved ones, your friends, that you have in this area?"
My name is Gene Owen. I've been here since the 17th of March, here in Cortez. I went away when I was in the service and I've seen things happen here in Cortez. I've seen things happen in California, I've seen things happen as being in the service. The things that are mistakes that are made by people. We're all humans, we all make mistakes. But I got to tell you, I lived down on Linden, was born and raised there. My dad sold 300 acres from McPhee, the bottom of McPhee right now, to buy the lumber to build the house where I was born. The house was built inappropriately. It was built against any codes. It encroached on the side yards of the three lots that he bought. The neighbors on the other side moved the other way and consequently, that makes a hazard on the intersection. I've seen four or five different wrecks there. Codes are part of a community growing. Those are growing pains. You got to have codes, you got to have electrical codes, plumbing codes, building codes. I was the president for the carpenters' union in California and I helped a lot of young kids become carpenters through the apprenticeship program. I left California because it was getting too many restrictions, too many things on their codes that you couldn't live with. The color of the house, color of the roof. Subdivision had to do this, you had to be this, you had to do that. That's why we moved to Colorado to be free. Come back here to be free. I know some of the people on the board, we've had some dealings with you people. We've come in here, we've had to jump through hoops to try to, to do what the city wants you to do. If this code is not turned down, this place is going to be a ghost town in 10 years.
My name is Elizabeth Berger and truly, I didn't want to speak again, but I decided I would speak up for two reasons. One is because I did read the most recent article that Karen Sheik put into the newspaper. And it states that the old, the existing land use code was created 1998. It is my best knowledge that it was updated, it was renewed, it went on to 2005, it went on to 2010. It was valid into 2018, you voted it in. Nothing of that is mentioned in that, in your article. But what is mentioned is New England, flush green, everything different. We are not New England. We are the wide open west out here. If you don't like the desert, don't live here, you will not feel comfortable here. If you like narrow roads, don't live here because it doesn't work. If you want palm trees, don't live here because they will not grow. It's just a different climate. Sometimes you have to either accept where you are living or you have to move out. I moved the whole family in 1998 to Cortez. It is the most welcoming, the best family, the best community to raise a family. Thank you to the community. But also, thank you for the council courage to vote no today. To give everybody a chance to do their input and to do better and to step up and to keep Cortez as diverse as it is and, but also as a community as it is. And you please move inside the community and work with the community and let that old thing go. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Going once? Going twice? The public hearing is now closed. At this point, council, you have the opportunity to discuss what your feelings are, amplify in what's been shared.
I just want to thank all the community and everybody speaking. That input makes a big difference and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank everyone for speaking. We're here on the council because we serve you folks. We appreciate you. I love the city like you do. This land use code, I've gone through every page of it, made notes of it, and it's hard. It's hard to understand. I agree. I've looked at the old land use code and it doesn't cover everything we need. Things have changed. We need a land use code, but maybe not this one. I'm going to be on the council for two more years and I'm looking forward to working with all of you to have a land use code that works for all of us. And I challenge you to get involved. Don't just wait to the last minutes, you know, of when we're down to the finish line or the non-finish line. But get involved with the city, you know? Get involved with the land use codes. Not just land use codes, but everything. We need you folks. We need your input. And I don't know what else to say. I love Cortez and I love all you folks and I'm so happy that you're here speaking to us. And my gosh, thank you for showing up.
You know, sitting in this chair is humbling. And honestly, if we're doing our job correctly, it should be. And like all the other council people up here, and probably including some of our city staff, we're gracious to have you guys here. It's good to hear from you and it's good to see all your faces out there. I appreciate it immensely. I, like many of you, are from here. I was born and raised here. On my mom's side is the Dillon blood and some of you I'm sure know them. So, this means as much to me as anything. This means as much to me as it does to all of you. A lot of you I know, or at least are acquainted with. And so, coming out tonight speaks volumes to me as a, as a council member and I truly, truly appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
I'll agree. This, this is awesome. When I would tell people, "Come to council," and it finally happened. And what I said in the beginning, whenever you come and talk, and you could say the same thing over and over. But when you come there and I can look you in the eye when you're standing up there and I can, I can connect with you on a level. I mean, that's what really speaks, it speaks more, more than anything. Just to be able to sit there and look at you in the eyes and you're telling me your situation, your story, you know, what will affect you, what won't affect you. You know, I think that, yeah, I can't ask for anything more than that and it's great. So, thank you.
I would like to thank everybody who came here today or tonight and took time out of your precious schedules because I do know how hard it is to get out sometimes. But, right from the start with this land use code, my feelings were it was a little too rigid. And I've stuck to that and now I'm hearing it from you guys. And I thank you so much. And the lady that said that she, she's living on a fixed income, I'm on a fixed income now too. I can relate completely with that. I have kids, I have grandkids growing up here. So, you know, I do relate with all of you. And, I understand what a depressed community Cortez can be when it comes to money. So, you know, I'm grateful that you showed up, grateful that you've given all of us everything you have. And I look forward to hopefully working with you guys in some form of a committee as, when this land thing does finally decide to be made again, if we can get it out of here. And that's all I've got to say.
Hey, guys.
Well, I, I think I can say at this point that you have made compelling arguments. The council has listened to what you've had to say. We appreciate you coming out. I certainly have appreciated the opportunities that I have had during my tenure in this position to visit with citizens. And we would really, as a council, and I think I can speak for whoever comes on to council in April, that having citizen participation will be most welcomed. Government works best when it's a collaboration between the people that you have elected to office and the citizens in the community. We can make better decisions if we know what, what your feelings are or what your concerns are. And it also gives us an opportunity to clear up misconceptions. One of the gentlemen that spoke tonight made the point of saying that there have been some misrepresentations and some misconceptions. I, I think as council members and possibly as city staff, we can take some of the blame for that. We've, we've tried to get the word out, but obviously, we haven't been very successful in doing that. It's going to take some compromise, it's going to take everybody coming to the table and being willing to look at the big picture and come up with something that works for everybody, giving a little and taking a little. So at this point, if there are no other comments by council, may I have a motion, please?
Your Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do, just kidding. I would like to make the motion that we do not approve ordinance number 1267, series 2019, adopting reference the Cortez land use code and zoning map for the city of Cortez in its entirety.
Second.
Lou Cero.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Betts.
Aye.
Noyes.
Aye.
Lady.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
Now, you guys, you know you all have to stay until we're finished tonight. You can't leave now.
Wait, there's more.
Given the hour and the amount of time that we've been sitting here, I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break. So if you...
What happened? Oh, there's Mike. Okay. Just wanted to be sure I had everybody. All right, the bewitching hour is approaching, so let's see if we can get through this fairly quickly. We are on new business now, and the first item under new business is the reappointment of the Parks Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board. Rosa, are you going to... Okay, Rosa, let's take that.
Yeah, if I can get the mic on. So the Cortez Parks Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board would like to recommend that Tom Rennick is reappointed. He has served on the Parks Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board for the past six years. He's been involved, he's heavily involved in our annual Arbor Day celebration. Him and his wife are always there, helping out with everything. And he has expressed interest to become the chairperson, which was a recently vacated position on the board. So we appreciate his work, and we would like to have him reappointed.
Okay, council, are there any questions, comments?
Yeah, did we advertise this?
Yeah, it's constantly advertised on the website, and I think other places as well, but it says volunteer position that is advertised.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Will that be a complete board?
Um, I think we're still...
We need some youth.
Yeah, I think we need a youth, but...
Youth members.
Yeah.
We're short on youth members.
But the adult...
I'm busy, Mike, sorry.
Okay, come on, go.
I think for adults, yes, that completes the board, but I do know we have a couple of vacation, vacated positions.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I have none, thank you.
Right, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve the reappointment of Tom Rennick to the Parks Rec and Forestry Advisory Board for another term. I've worked with him for the last two years, and he's a great asset to the, to the board, and I'm glad we're doing it.
I'll second that. That's nice.
Noise?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Bets?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Lou Sero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
All right, the next item is Resolution Number Two, Series 2020, approving rules for public hearings on retail marijuana. Mike?
This is going to be the first one in a series of these. Thank you. This is going to be the first one in a series of these. This came out of the New View, appeal of the decision denying them a license. And so what we've done is we've codified the things you should consider and the way you should do it, so you have a handy dandy reference, so to speak, to look at during the meeting, the things you should consider, et cetera. This has been reviewed by the attorneys that represented us in the appeal. It appears to match the judge's order about what we should consider and not consider neighborhood and all those things, and so now it's on paper. You'll also be getting down the road another set regarding medical marijuana, liquor, and some of the other meetings, so that there's a guideline more direct and updated for you on everything. So this one would be for use at the meeting to have a new hearing on the liquor or the retail marijuana application in New View, and I think it's the 25th of February.
Um, Mike, just to clarify, I know, I know in the past that the main, one of the differences is that the entire city of Cortez will be considered the neighborhood. Is that correct?
The, it, what it did was it put down on paper some things that we had just done, like liquor, which is that the neighborhood is the entire city. Who can speak? Only people who live in the city, have a business in the city, or own real estate in the city can speak. It talks about the things you can consider or more consider in your decision to approve or not approve, or more accurately stated than...
So if a citizen who's, who is located near a potential site, we can take into consideration if they would write a letter to council or to email council expressing concern, we could consider that?
Um, it's a public hearing process, ma'am, and so, um...
I think we can deny people the right to speak at a public hearing whether they live in the city limits or not.
Pardon?
We can't deny people the right to speak for or against such a business, whether they live in the city limits or not.
According to Judge Plou, we can and should have. That was the order he issued in the appeal, that people who were not citizens or had an interest in city business were allowed to speak. And he also criticized that the fact that the neighborhood wasn't stated anywhere except how we talked about it at the meeting. And so this is being done to come into compliance with that order, where he ordered the new hearing, which we've rescheduled for the 25th. So that's why we're... This is drafted to meet those requirements. He's saying you don't, in, you know, in the parlance, you don't have skin in the game, so to speak, unless you have one of the three nexuses or ties to the city. You own real estate, you live here, or you run a business here. And so that's, I think his perception was too many people from out in the county spoke about what was happening in the city regarding what we're doing. And that wasn't appropriate, according to the New View folks, and so he, for some reason, just... Well, he said that's basically what the ordinance said, and so they shouldn't have spoken. So that's what we're trying to do, is get the rules set, so New View knows what's going to happen on the 25th as far as how we run the meeting, and you folks have a set of guidelines to be able to follow, and which is a little more handy.
Which, which will eventually be, which will eventually involve other businesses as well?
This is the rules forever on everybody. Judge Plou pretty much told us how these hearings should be conducted based on his review of how we held that last one. And he pointed out some improvements, and he pointed out some errors, and so that's where we are. And we will try and get you a set, we're going to get you a set of rules for all the other hearings. It's probably time to update some of the other ones anyway, make sure they comply with the ordinances, the way they're written, make sure they comply, for example, with the liquor laws, the way they're written, and get things moving in the right direction. So staff's looked at this and recommends approval of the resolution. The Denver attorneys who represented us in the appeal recommends it as well. We cleared it with them.
So bottom line is that we got to go with the judge tells us?
Yes, sir. He pointed out where we weren't as set up properly as we could have been, and so that's why we're setting rules.
So if the person that's putting the business in Cortez lives out in the county...
They have an interest in being in Cortez because they have a business here, and it could affect their business, so they should be able to speak about what could affect their business in Cortez. If they're simply just a county resident who doesn't have a business or own real estate in Cortez, they don't have as much reason to speak out for or against it as, say, a resident or a business owner or a property owner.
Okay, but somebody lives in the county, owns business in town, or has property, can still...
Yes, sir.
Okay. It was like a kind of turned around there for a minute.
No, no, I'm sorry. I apologize for any confusion, but that's what the judge had said.
All right, are there any other questions, comments about this?
I have none.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number Two, Series 2020, approving rules for public hearings on retail marijuana approvals.
Bets?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Lou Sero?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Next item is the Welcome Center janitorial bid results. Peyton?
Good evening, council. So the city went out for bid for janitorial services for the Cortez Welcome Center. They received two bids, one from Redfin Janitorial for the amount of $21,775.16. The other from AAA Carpet Cleaning and Sparkle, and that was for $32,800. Staff recommends council choose the lower bidder for Redfin Janitorial. In the 2020 budget, the city did budget $18,000 for janitorial services, so the bid from Redfin Janitorial will exceed the 2020 budget by $3,775.16. Any questions?
Peyton, I noticed when they, when they submitted their bid that they listed an additional cost of $2,000 two times a year. What does that cover? What services are they providing that... Is that for things like cleaning windows, or things that are carpet cleaning, or something that you don't do more often?
Going to have to defer that question to Rick or someone from the service center. Unfortunately, he answered that.
Mayor, I do, I do remember that there was a cleaning of the windows in there, and I believe there's also carpet cleaning. So I definitely know windows were included as every so and while you got to clean the windows, we can't see out.
Oh, I don't know, might go for a long time. Okay, I was just curious. Does anybody else have any questions about that?
Where would the other $3,700 come from?
I guess council would have to prove the increase in... I don't know, John may be the one to answer that.
As we get close to the end of the year, when we true up things, we will bring it back. If they have spent everything else in their budget, then we will come back and ask for additional appropriation, and we'll find it within the general fund.
And that, that was the only two bids that came in?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is there an option to put it up for a rebid?
I believe so.
Is that, is that what you'd like to see happen?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we put the Welcome Center janitorial contract back out for a rebid to see if we can't get a next and third bid.
Second it.
Sue, sorry about that.
No, it was me. I didn't have my microphone.
Didn't hear you. So Levy?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lou Sero?
Aye.
Bets?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye. Uh, an agreement with Living Solar to replace trees at the Cortez Welcome Center should the root damage from the installation of the EV charging station cause them to die. Peyton?
Maybe it wasn't the most eloquent wording in the agreement, but we have an EV charging station at the Welcome Center, and during the installation, staff noticed that there was some root damage to a couple of the trees. Before we issue any kind of final payment, we'd like to have something in place where a Living Solar would replace those tree species if they were to die. So that's what we have here. There's, I mean, there's no guarantees. It's kind of up in the air, but we want something in place.
So, so it's in case the trees don't make it?
Yeah, just because of the root damage.
Are we talking trees that will instantaneously provide shade, or they're going to have to mature in order to do so?
They're going to have to mature.
Okay, so maybe that's something that takes a long time for a tree to get that big. I want to see how the charging stations go first. What are they, what are we charging people?
Not enough.
Well, we could take part of those funds and, and make a tree fund for the charging station.
Might be okay, though.
That'll take us like 400 years.
Well, let's cross our fingers that the trees are able to rejuvenact those roots, so...
But Living Solar would pay for the cost, correct? Do they pick the trees, or do we pick the trees?
What I, this has sort of changed a little bit from what I... Mike? This is a little bit changed from what I proposed, because I had included the costs of removing the old trees and/or, unless I missed it here, the cost of putting the new trees in. This is down to, they're just going to pay us... For some reason, staff picked these size trees as being the most appropriate to replant, for whatever reason, and gave the two prices to us. And then there was a decision made not to include the costs of removal and replanning, for some reason. But this would be cash, and then the city staff would replace the trees.
Maybe, maybe we should look at the entire cost prior to making a decision on this. If we're now just learning that, that's not the entire cost.
Right.
Or what they will pay for, sorry, what they will pay for?
Well, the, the cost of the trees, originally this agreement had cost of the trees plus cost of removal of the old trees and replacement of, you know, putting these two back in the ground.
Well, what was, what was that?
I've never got a number, because it appeared staff, I don't know why, I can't tell you that. And that was removed from this agreement. So that's one reason it looks like it's so little. As to the tree size, that was done by the park staff, and they were, they came up with those numbers and that size. I'm assuming, and I shouldn't probably, that it's just for ease of being able to get them in the ground, and bigger trees are harder to plant. So they picked this size.
Just to speak to the tree removal, it was a discussion that I'd had with Dean, and he said that his team could remove trees at minimal costs, or I think it would be significantly more for Living Solar. I think part of the discussion is they're going to be the ones who are maintaining our charging station, and we want to work with them. They're small operation out of Durango.
So, so the reason that that was done was order to...
Because it's minimal cost for the city.
All right, council, any other questions? What's your pleasure?
So bottom line is a $1,044 just for the trees, right?
That's what I'm reading.
So they're not paying the city to replace them?
They're not paying the cost that the city incurs for replacing them, even though we'd be using our own equipment, our own staff. I think I was told, now I remember, and I was told we had the equipment to do it, but I wasn't told why we weren't charging back our time for...
That's what I was wondering.
I don't like that. Well, then we need to make a motion. What would you... I think I'd like to make a motion to have, well, Peyton's not going to be here, but to have that part of staff recon contact Living Solar and try to get a price to replace the trees that includes our labor, and we can use our equipment, but I do believe the man-hours need to be on there, so to use our, use our equipment, but they need to pay for the man-hours it takes. So to get a different bid. The, the cost to, the cost to remove and replace the trees, the city cost to remove and replace the trees should be added to that? Right.
Second.
Aye. Bets?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Noise?
Aye.
Lou Sero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
And I know this is just hypothetical, you know, maybe the trees will be fine, so... What's that?
Just hypothetical.
So Peyton, I'd like to say thank you for being here at the city of Cortez for three years?
Two, two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
I second that.
Anyway, we really appreciate your time and your effort and everything you've done. So... So I, probably along with everyone else, wish you the best of luck.
Can we do a double second?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I had a wonderful two years with staff here.
Well, Eagle is very lucky to have you. Very lucky. We have no draft resolutions or ordinances, no other items of business at this time. Are there any other citizens that would like to address council? Maybe there's a button in the front.
Okay, got it. Sorry, it's late. I know, I'm up here again for the umpteenth time tonight, but I do wanna thank each and every one of you for making what I think was the responsible and the right choice tonight. I know it was frustrating, it was frustrating on both sides of this desk, I understand that. But during this process, I have learned a lot. I have gained a lot of friendships that I will treasure forever during this process. And some of these people have asked me, now, Lana, what are you gonna do with the rest of your time? You've been fighting this for 10 months, and my husband's gonna strangle me when I say this, but I would like to volunteer my time and his time. Andy, come on. To help facilitate a revision to our code that best fits everybody's needs. And we are always here, please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's late, so I'm going to be quick. I just want to thank all of you for listening to us and doing what's best for our community, keeping it the charming, retaining the charm and the atmosphere that has made Cortez a desirable place to live and visit for many decades. And I offered June the 14th, and I'm offering again, I will sit on committees, I will chair a committee. I will be happy to help, to be a liaison between the city and getting people involved, because I came to this really late, and it was a really scramble, so I'd like to be involved from the beginning. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I've thanked all of you already, but I wouldn't like to do that again. Thank you also for making the responsible, right decision. As a business owner here, and since I've spoken, speaking with Ty earlier, the last 11 years of my life have not been easy. Back in the game, I'm here, get in contact with us, let us know from a business standpoint, gladly volunteer as much time as I possibly can to help come up with reasonable codes. And yeah, we do need them, we need guidelines, so please, reach out to us. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Well, this, this just, yes, if somebody, or, or to replace an existing one. It's just cleaning it up, so that we have, coming up in, in February, we have a businessman who, who had come to council and had wanted to open a marijuana establishment, and at that time, council voted no, and they took us to court, because they felt that we hadn't gone through the proper processes, and so the whole purpose of, the whole purpose of, of this resolution was to clean it up, so that we'd have clearer guidelines, because they will be coming back. Yes. This is, that's, that's a different, that's a different situation. Yes, no, it's a different... Yeah. Well, it's, it's, it's not, their business... No, their...
That's a hemp processing.
Their business was a hemp processing, CBD extraction. No, no, it doesn't.
Okay, I just have a, a short question. What is the case number, so that I could read the judgment, please?
I don't have it from it, it was an appeal, Rule 106.
Uh, sorry, appeal?
It was an, it was an appeal of a city decision, so there's not really a judgment. I'm sorry.
It's an appeal of a city decision, I'm quasi-judicial, so I don't have the case number, but it's New View versus the city of Cortez.
Nu?
N-U-V-U-E is what I'm remembering. Yes, ma'am.
U-B?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And if you call my secretary, Julie, tomorrow, I won't see her till later in the morning, 'cause I gotta be at the dentist at eight, um, I can email you a copy of it.
Oh.
The order.
Okay, yeah, so just, I, I could probably look it up. Do you have the judgment in your office?
I have a copy of the appeals order, it's not necessarily a judgment, like a, a case where you sue somebody for money.
Okay.
Basically, the judge remanded it back to city council for another hearing.
But he did give you some input in how to direct?
Yes, ma'am.
City council?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I will call your office, what's the phone number?
Um, 565-6362.
6362, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, would anybody else like to address council?
All right, we have no city attorney's report.
Just, just briefly, real quickly, the young lady sitting down alongside me has been attorney who's been doing some research work for the city, Tina Martinez. For some strange reason, she decided she wanted to come over tonight and see what a city council meeting was, so she got a real show. Far be three hours beyond what we normally might be. But that's who she is, and she's been doing a lot of research on different topics, some land use, some marijuana, some other things, and so she's helping fill the gap and making things happen a little quicker. Thanks for being here.
John, do you have an update?
Peyton, thank you for everything you've done. I've only been here a year and a half, but I don't know what I would have done without you, and best of luck as you begin your new career.
Thank you.
Good luck in Eagle.
All right, do we have any city council committee reports?
Yes. I'll keep, I'll keep it short. I was on the Parks and Rec and Forestry Advisory Board on January 17th, and I'll just cover some of the things we discussed. We discussed the South Neighborhood Park project status and the naming recommendations, and talked about renaming the city park to Veterans Park Council Report, and we nominated new advisory board chairman, Tom Renick, which we voted on tonight. Okay, I also attended the cultural center board this morning, from nine till noon, and we, some of the upcoming events, one I've attended before, it's Marty McKean, he's a local veterinarian, and he's been there, been a veterinarian for years, and he has, the topic is veterinary tales. It might be, I think it might be spelled T-A-I-L-S. And I attended the last one, and it's hilarious. He has so many humorous stories about his year, decades of being a veterinarian, it's, it's really well worth going to. It's February 19th, that's coming up next month. Also, the Pueblo to Pueblo is, race is April 25th, and on May 13th to 17th is the Birding Fest. And I'd also like to celebrate with you my survival, a year, a year ago today, I was in a helicopter flying to Grand Junction on life support, and somehow I survived that, and I survived tonight, and I just, and I just wanted to show my appreciation to all the folks that, you know, sent flowers and cards and well-wishing and wished me health, and I thank all of you.
Glad to be sitting next to you.
That's all.
We'd like you here, Mike. Any other committee needs? Okay, we had no workshop tonight, so there's no report. Unless there's something else, council?